Twenty eight, twenty twenty one. Before we go any further, we have a lot of interested parties here this evening for various items on the agenda. We're still working under the restraints of COVID. So what I would ask is be mindful of separation of people. When we move on to another item, if you're not participating in that item, if you could, I don't want you to leave, but you could give your seat up to other people. It'd be greatly appreciated. We have some warrant articles, the article on Depot Street that can be very critical. So just be mindful of the number of people in here. Also, we ask that if a question has been asked once this evening, I feel comfortable having it asked a second time. But trees, you know, trying to limit that showing everyone's question. And also, if we could limit, unless you have one person who would like to represent several neighbors, try to rotate the people asking questions. So Jim, I'd like to move on to the public hearing for 148 Depot Street South. Can you bring us up to date on what is going on with that?
Absolutely. Can you guys hear me all right?
We can.
Excellent. So 148 Depot Street has submitted a request to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay. Can you clarify for the audience what that means?
Sure. So the applicant has decided to no longer move forward with this project at this property at this time. So they are requesting to withdraw the entirety of that application on that parcel, 148. Obviously, the board will get to 152 shortly, but 148, the request is to withdraw without prejudice. And what that means is that they can take back their application. And if at a future time, any, this applicant or any others that wants to submit, can submit. Now, they would start the process over. Notification would go out. Public hearing hearings would begin once again. But at this time, they're requesting to withdraw. And so it would halt the project or the process and no longer be before the planning board.
Does the attorney want to say anything at all?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Joseph Antonellis, how are you all tonight?
Attorney Antonellis, thank you.
Just briefly, I think James has given an excellent summary of what a withdrawal without prejudice is. The applicant was mindful of the comments that were put forth by the residents in and around the south parcels, specifically the south parcel, and felt at this time with the, looking at the perspective of what he'd liked accomplishment, thought he'd like to spend his efforts in improving the north parcel and leave the south parcel to a later date or some other person.
Thank you. Jim, I'd like to move on to 152 Depot Street North.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we do.
Do we need to vote on the?
Correct. The board does need to act on the withdrawal. So they motioned to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Motion to accept the withdrawal on 148 Depot Street South. I have a motion on the floor that has been seconded. All in favor of accepting withdrawal on 148 Depot Street South. Please signify by saying aye. That motion passes unanimously. Jim, can you tell us what has happened since our last meeting with regards to 152 Depot Street?
Absolutely. So I just did a quick outline for the board. And I know, recognizing that a lot of folks in the audience can't see the screen, I'll just read it real quick. But since the last meeting, obviously, the applicant, we just went through the motions of the applicant withdrawing 148. The board has requested that the police and the town administration review traffic concerns on Depot Street and begin discussion with the property owners to rectify this issue. Obviously, I'm sure the residents will like to talk about this issue a little further shortly. But I will say that the police chief has been out there and having discussions with that specific property. I know there's new signage up from DPW that is beginning the process of enforcement on Depot Street. And I believe the building inspector has been out there as well to begin that enforcement. So that is ongoing. The board has requested an update on paving of the train crossing on Depot Street to get an understanding. DPW has provided that update that it likely will be one of the first projects up in the springtime. Obviously, it's a little late this, this year to do that. The board has asked DPW and police departments to review traffic safety mitigation measures at Depot and Hartford Avenue. Obviously, we will have our traffic engineer fully vetting that. But DPW and police have been out there to give some initial reactions and provide that input to our peer review engineer. Again, adding on to that, the board has engaged a peer review engineer. Tonight, we won't have an opportunity to really speak on those matters as they're still being reviewed by our peer review engineers. It's a large project. So our engineers are looking at all things, stormwater, drainage, environment, and traffic. And lastly, the board was to schedule a site walk for, I believe it was last weekend. However, we have moved that back to November 13th because typically, the board likes to have all the information at hand. And since our peer review engineer hasn't provided input just yet, we thought it would be prudent to hold off so that we can have everything armed and ready to go when we go out to the site to understand it fully.
Thank you. In addition, the public, Attorney Rosniak, and Joe, are people aware of the mass idling law? It is illegal to idle a truck on any piece of property off the townhead, I believe, longer than five to seven minutes. That is a violation of the idling laws. That will be brought to the police department's attention. It is a state law. I insured about 25 trucking companies. I can tell you the fine for such a violation is rather significant, approaching six, six figures. So Attorney Rosniak, you may want to let the people you represent and the neighbors, you may want to do some research on the mass idling law to see how and when it is applicable. So as you can tell, we have done a lot since the last meeting. We told you to contact the police department, the DPW, and we reached out even further than that. Jim, what do we have new this evening? I see the applicant is here. Would you like to come forward and present any additional information?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Jim had done a nice job of just kind of recapping what, really what has, what has happened on the south side. But to reiterate, the developer thought it was best to withdraw that application based on some of the comments they heard to try to work with the neighbors so that it's off the table and we are focusing on the north side of the project. I would like to point out, based on that, the, obviously, you know, half the project's going away. The developer is still committing to the full, the full mitigation package that was previously committed to. To reiterate, he was contributing to a signal, $250,000 to a signal at Hartford and Depot Street that's not getting proposed to be reduced based on the reduction in the density of the project. Additionally, the parcel of land that the DPW had requested be donated to the town is still proposed to be donated to the town. So none of that changes based on the withdrawal of the, of the site, south side, relative to the parcel at hand on the north side. We really don't have any, any new plans right now to present. It's going out to peer review, at which point we'll get all of the peer review comments. Here are the comments that we received and make any land revisions based on that. By way of clarification, we will be making a couple of changes and providing new information to the board. Obviously, we'll update the traffic study. The results aren't going to change. It's just going to show that there's less traffic, but we will do that for the record. That will be provided. We're going to update the project narrative that was provided as well to clarify that traffic, the traffic numbers and some of the information that we heard, excuse me, at the last hearing. We would like to clarify on the northern side. Now, we will be proceeding with 24-hour operation. I know that was a point of discussion during the last hearings. I wanted to be very clear and put that open on this board and the public forum. So the north, we will proceed with a 24-hour operation. We do feel as though, and we'll put this in the narrative, that it will fit in well from where the location is on the northern side. Mainly, we are, the location of the building is much further away from any residences than on the south side. It's about, just under 400 feet to the closest resident, resident to the north. Beyond that, there's a gas easement and a rail line which will ensure that the buffer that exists there today will always exist there today. And it's very well educated in that regard. We will provide some information on sound study to show that and be very cognizant of that to make sure that we aren't going to cause any, any issue. Further, the way the building is situated on the north side, the loading operation is on the opposite side of the building. So essentially, the building shields everything from the receptors. We heard some comments just about concerns with, you know, essentially the existing of businesses that are in sight with trucks idling on, on Depot Street. That is absolutely not something that will happen or be proposed. Part of the issue on the existing property is the gate is right at the driveway, which trucks have no choice but to stay there. So they have an operational issue they need to deal with. On this property, it has been designed that there's close to 2,000, many of your feet of driveways. You come into the site, there's a drive aisle that a truck could go and be onsite and not on Depot Street. So we're going to clarify that within the project narrative just to address all of the impacts, some of the things that we heard and how we believe the project will operate. So as I mentioned, I don't have any new plans or anything to present to the board. I think we're going to wait till we get the peer review comments rather than piecemeal the information to the board. I think it might be more efficient that way.
Okay.
You know, unless you'd want us to handle.
No, I think, you know, that's the proper way to do it.
Yeah, we'll get everything in, address all of the comments. Hopefully, address the peer reviewers and give you plans to.
I believe that's the most transparent way of doing it.
I think so.
And that's what we've, we've done as well. Anything else?
I think that's all that I really wanted to give by way of update.
Before I make any comments, any questions in the board? I will express one concern, going back to last week, our last meeting. We indicated to you that we were very concerned with the hours of operation. At that point, it was indicated to be eight to five, and we asked for you to steer with that. And now, the next meeting is now gone in 24. You know, I think when we open up to the public, they may address some concerns about the 20-hour nature of the operation. But I just want to reiterate that was a concern that this board represented the last week.
We, we understand that and frankly, it was an error on, on, on our part with the, how that was presented.
Okay.
Just had some misinformation on that. And again, what I think I do want to focus on, and I apologize for the confusion. And I did want to be forward with that, with the commission and be open with that. But I do believe with how everything is set up, and I do encourage your peer reviewers to look at everything and just do a sound study and all of that. We think that it actually would work the way it would be intended as.
One other question I have. In essence, you will have a staging area off the Depot Street. You're attracted together so they don't park on Depot Street. Is that correct?
Correct. So the intent, part of what's happening right now is there, and some of the existing tenants, I can't speak to how they pay off.
I understand that.
But there's, there's a gate essentially, call it 50 feet in from the driveway. And trucks aren't allowed to go in. So if a truck gets there before they're allowed to do the delivery from an operational standpoint, it sounds like they're just sitting on Depot Street.
Okay.
We obviously don't want that to happen. It's not a good idea for that to happen. So we built into the design mechanism so that wouldn't happen. Yep. The gate would be much further into the site. We would have, for whatever reason, if they couldn't get into a dock for an operational issue, that they would be on the property. If you turn the truck down to be on the property, it wouldn't be in the public.
Is the change allowed into a specific tenant? Is there going to change?
So there isn't a specific tenant that is identified at this point. They're, it's, they're looking for, for tenants. And it's really the way the industrial market works right now. The, the, the 24 hours is honestly was a misunderstanding on our part relative to how that was, how that was working. It isn't anything based on a tenant. However, it is there to keep flexibility in the right tenants and how to keep the whole realm of, of tenants open and their options open. But there isn't a specific tenant that's identified for that.
Any other concerns before I open up to the public? Yes, absolutely.
I know you stated earlier about the, a gas easement, which I assume that's the 50-foot wide gong wind gas even that's along the railroad.
That's correct.
All right. I just noticed that there's also, there's a 30-foot gas easement that's located right within the limits of your proposed building.
Correct.
Is that?
So the, the 50-foot easement that runs parallel with the build is actually two. There's, there's one on our property. And then, if you go on the opposite side of Depot, there's another street. Those are live gas lines. So there's actually pipes there. The one that cut through our property was an easement that was established from the property, once upon a time, was going to be the power plant back in the early 2000s.
Okay.
So it's, it's an easement that's going to get extinguished. There's nothing, there's no pipes there and there's no future use for it. All right.
That's my question.
That brings up a question. That removal of that easement will be done legally? That will have to be documented?
Yes.
To some entity releasing that, correct?
Yeah, that will all be done as part of the title and getting that.
Okay, just one to clarify.
Yeah, that, that, absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to turn it over to the public. Is the, is the attorney, what was the act here?
Attorney Rosniak, for our request is not here. He's still very much engaged. But given what we were told was going to be discussed, we thought that it would be better for him to come when there's more information available.
Okay.
But I would like to speak when.
Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Boyett on 58 Lockston Road. And first, I want to hear some concerns. I'll try to be as brief as possible, but I do have a number of concerns. Going back to the first meeting that we had, there were four things that were mentioned that were concerning to me, red flags, whatever you want to call it. The first one was, we talked about the lack of knowing who the tenant was. We still don't know.
Could you instruct everything to the board?
Yes, I'm sorry. So we don't know, we don't know who the tenant is.
Correct.
Personally, I think that in order to approve a building that's going to be of this size and scope, we should at least know who's going to be occupying it, what they're going to be doing, because as residents, we have a vested interest in knowing. So how a building can be approved absent the knowledge of a tenant is a little bit bizarre to me.
Okay.
All right. Secondly, hours of operation, we already went through that. I knew, I knew this eight to five was not going to happen. At least it came to bear now that it's going to be 24 hours. My guess is Amazon would be my guess. That's a 24-hour operation. I'm skeptical whether or not they don't know or whether or not they just don't want to disclose. Either way, it's a problem. 24 hours operation within 400 feet of the nearest residence? I think is perfectly unacceptable.
Okay.
That was number two. Number three, that this, even though there's one warehouse on the table now, they're talking about not having a significant impact on traffic. That's false. I mean, look at Best Buy and look at Dunkin' Donuts and look at the videos. I don't know if you've seen the videos that we sent.
Yeah.
You have. Okay. So you've seen that traffic. That traffic is proof that those two warehouses has, have more of a demand for road infrastructure than the town of Bellingham can handle. We already are at a critical mass right now with those two warehouses. When you have a third warehouse of 200 and somewhat thousand square feet with multiple loading docks for tractor trailers, that's main business is inbound and outbound traffic. Of course, it's going to have a significant impact on traffic. And of course, whoever's proposing this to you is not going to give you any critical information because it's going to hurt their costs. That was number three. Number four, the light. A light at the corner of Depot Street and Hartford Ave is not going to do anything but reduce accidents. It may, it will reduce accidents, but it's not going to reduce the traffic. It's not going to reduce the congestion. You, the only way you're going to reduce congestion is to widen the road. And then, all of us is going to have our names on headstones before Depot Street and Hartford Ave is widened. We can't do anything now. We're screwed with those two, two warehouses. And when we talk about a third warehouse and mitigation, well, look at the definition of mitigation. It's to reduce the painfulness or the seriousness of something. As long as we have to mitigate the approval of a warehouse, that's in and of itself a problem. We shouldn't have to mitigate something because we're putting it in somewhere. And as it relates directly to 152 Depot Street, look at, just as, as an example, look at, if you want to look at a well-thought-out industrial area, look at Forge Park in Franklin. That area's got dual, dual roadways on each side. So you've got two lanes of traffic going in each direction. It's well separated from any residences. It's well thought out. You go down Depot Street and it's an afterthought. You've got some small industrial buildings that looks like it can handle, we can handle it. And then you've got two behemoths that have caused a massive issue in town. And you've seen it, it's massive. So why? Why do we want to add a third warehouse when we can't even address the traffic issues that we have now? I know the whole idling thing and parking, that's separate. But the actual traffic itself, we aren't going to do anything about that. There's nothing. The horses have been let out of the barn and then it was locked after they left. And I've done some research. I've talked to a number of people along Hartford Ave and off of Hartford Ave that have decided to move out of town because of the traffic. I took, the most recent person I spoke to lives in the South Bellingham side now. They lived on Hartford Ave. And I'm going to quote her when I say this. She said, prior to the warehouses, she said, traffic was reasonable. And she said, there was a nice mix of commercial and residential. After the addition of Dunkin' Donuts, she said, traffic tripled. She said, when Best Buy was approved, she said, it became unbearable. She said that when they had water bans in town, she was able to get a special permit to water because cigarette butts were thrown out of the vehicles and started fires on her property. So she was able to, to skip out on the water ban. Trash, trucker bombs, and for those of you who don't know what trucker bombs are, they're bottles filled with urine that truckers piss in while they're driving. And then they throw up a window onto property as they're driving down. They won't do it on the highway, obviously. They'll do it along here. It's a byproduct of all the trucks. So she once was able to sit out on her deck. And this is directly from her, I'm not making this crap up. She said she couldn't sit on her deck anymore because the traffic was so bad. The noise of brake brakes, the smell of diesel, the trash, the noise. She moved out of town. She sold out of North Bellingham. She lives in South Bellingham. And my point to all this with respect is when people leave town because of decisions that were made by the town that caused irreparable harm, then the town, in my opinion, has let them down. The town has let the people of Bellingham along Hartford Ave and Depot Street on and off has let us down because of the traffic that those two warehouses have created. And we can't do anything about anymore because it's no mitigation to that. And the light is not one that's going to mitigate anything. It's just not. So I don't understand why we would even be looking at a third warehouse, given what we're looking at with traffic now. And that's just one piece of it. That's all. And I'll just say, and I'll, I'll make this brief. I was fortunate to make a decent living for myself in business in the private sector. And I made some decent business decisions. And I can tell you that if this project was in the private sector and put on my lap to make the decision to approve or to deny, and knowing everything I know about the traffic and what's happened with Best Buy and Dunkin' Donuts and the result of that, if I green-lighted that project, this project, I'd be fired. I swear to God, I'd be fired because of it. So I'm asking you to look at this very seriously. Because if you can't come up with a mitigation for the traffic with Best Buy and Dunkin' Donuts, then how can you in good conscience approve another warehouse on Depot Street? This Depot Street is not the place for another warehouse. I'm not saying, I'm not against industry. We need industry, but it's the wrong location. And, and if I may say, I do appreciate 148 being pulled. I do. I know it was said that it was done in consideration of the residents and, and it was done without prejudice. We appreciate that. And if you notice, no one stood up and cheered and clapped because we're relieved. We don't want to look at this, you know, we don't want to rub this in anybody's face. We're relieved. But I will say that our same issues exist with 152. If there was a real concern, if the real concern about pulling 148 off the table was for the residents, 152 should be pulled off for the same reason. It's only a few tenths of a mile up the street. It's still close to other residences and it's still going to cause massive traffic on top of what we're already dealing with. Take the whole, take, take the whole traffic issue and parking off the table. And let's assume that's going to be enforced. We're still dealing with chaos along Hartford Ave. So I would ask that you look at that very seriously. And based on what I heard on the first meeting, with respect, I would look at everything with a very critical eye from this point forward. Because not knowing who's going in there, I suspect they know. I'm just, that's my opinion. Going from eight hours to 24 hours, you know, another, you know, critical issue you should pay close attention to. And obviously, there's no mitigation of traffic. There isn't. If, if there is mitigation, someone tell me, aside from widening the road. So saying that it was, was not going to be a serious impact, again, it, you know, none of it made sense to me. If, if someone didn't tell me that we were looking at warehouses as a proposal and I just heard what was talked about, I would never guess that would be a 200 and somewhat thousand square foot warehouse. Because what was said just doesn't match up with what they're proposing to put on.
Thank you.
So with that, I appreciate it.
Do you want to respond?
I, I do.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's really not much to respond to other than I, I could just reiterate that there's, there isn't, there's not a tenant that we don't want to admit who it is. There's not a tenant. So that, there's really nothing more I can say towards, towards that.
I know, I want to, I need to clear the air on something. Okay, it bothers me. This evening, you mentioned that you have videos. Those videos were put on Facebook and we have seen those. I'm speaking as one member of the planning. I've been involved in the town of Bellingham, giving back to this town since I moved in. There are a lot of things being spread out on Facebook before even held our first meeting. I'm going to quote something that was sent to me. I don't do Facebook, I don't do Twitter. That was sent to me that I believe other people in town have seen. Someone is getting their back pocket padded during this process. You're saying this board is corrupt by saying our back pocket is being padded. I find that insulting. I've been giving back to this town since practically 1988 in one elected capacity or another. But to imply that our back pockets are being padded. But to imply that our back pockets are being padded couldn't be further from the truth. This board has been very transparent. This board is above board. And I don't want to speak to other board members. This is inappropriate. But I was insulted when I read that. I know it's on Facebook and technically, I believe that becomes a public document. And I was offended. So I need to clear the air on that. And I found it bothersome. Yes, sir.
I want you to know that none of us, as far as I know in here, have ever accused the board of that. I don't know who did.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't represent what we believe. It doesn't represent what attorney Wozniak, you know, believes. So we can't, you know, we are very involved in the whole.
I appreciate that, sir.
But I can't control what other people say.
I understand that.
And I want you to know that that's not what we believe. So as long as you understand.
I understand that, but it was out there.
And I hear you.
And it bothers me.
I'd be pissed off myself.
Okay.
I would.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, there is.
I can tell you, sir, and Jim, in regards to the tenants, Maple Street, when we approved it, we did not know who the tenant was, correct?
That's, yeah, that's correct. As well as, as well as Mechanics. Yep. You beat me to it. Yeah, the Maple Street and Mechanic Street. It's just the trend that we have seen in Bellingham and the region. These tend to be spec buildings, tilt-up concrete construction. And then they're fit up later on. That's what we have at least historically seen here in town.
Yeah, so that is actually what we're seeing in the market right now. I mean, the vacancy rate for industrial product in the whole region is less than five percent. So when you have a market like that, you get a lot of developers that want to bring speculative projects to the market because you have so much tenant demand. So it's not uncommon to see that in this type of market. We see it in downtown Boston too with office buildings. There's several buildings underway that don't have tenants that are pretty nice.
In regards to Amazon, Amazon is looking for bigger buildings right now. They're looking at, I've heard between two, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, three million dollars, there's a building out in Oxford's between two and three million square feet on the intersection of Route sixteen and one forty-six, designated for Amazon. So I believe that two hundred and fifty thousand at this point is too small for an Amazon location in Bellingham. I don't disagree that it could be twenty-four hours. But I think we're beyond the scope of what Amazon would want. They're looking for bigger buildings.
More different types of warehouses.
I understand that.
Different sites.
Yes. I appreciate that, but I think they're looking for things much larger now. What is happening in Bellingham is a local hub. And then they go on from there. I also believe they're looking at other satellite warehouses in the neighboring towns, even going into it.
Mr. Chairman, there is a, there is a hand up online, if you like, from Casey.
I'm sorry?
There is one individual with their hand up online. There's Casey here.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Casey Pettipah Haggerty. I am at two twenty-six Depot Street.
Yes, ma'am.
I spoke at the last meeting briefly about traffic, mostly about the fact that if it weren't for the railroad, I would be the direct butter to one fifty-two Depot Street. I back up to that part, literally one end of my part of my land is the parcel that they're donating to the DPW. The easement is, the gas easement is on my land. And then it's the railroad and then it's one fifty-two Depot Street. The idea that they have a four hundred foot buffer between the warehouse and me is ridiculous. It is within four hundred feet of my house. It is under four hundred feet from my house. That's not the corner of their lot. That is the corner of their building. That is not the driveway around the building because that's under three hundred feet from my house. I am also going to say that if their idea of vegetation and a gas easement that is routinely mowed is enough of a barrier, then they haven't visited the site at all. There is no vegetation in the gas easement that stays very long because it gets mowed. It has to. It's a gas easement. They're looking at having a set of trees on either side of the railroad and that's it. And the majority of the trees that are there now are deciduous. They lose their leaves, which means there is no barrier. All of the leaves, all the trees on my property that would be the barrier immediately near my house, lose their leaves. They're losing their leaves now. I can see much more of the train track and the land on the other side of it than I could even a month ago. Twenty-four hour traffic, three hundred feet from my house, is going to be loud. And there's nothing currently in the plans and nothing that has been said about fixing that. And I am concerned about light from traffic going around the building because that is the truck route. I am concerned with the noise of the vehicles, twenty-four hours, less than three hundred feet from my house. They say, yes, we've got the building up between them. The trucks are going to be on the other side when they back up. That's great. But in winter, when there's no trees, and I'm not complaining about Dunkin' in this regard because I knew it going in, I can hear Dunkin' all the time. It is definitely going to be audible when it's three hundred feet from my house. That statement really makes me angry. Because clearly he is not respecting, he clearly hasn't taken a look at the site in person to know that that's not enough of a barrier. Now, I will also say this about the gas easement. It acts as a funnel for noise. It does not act as a barrier. The number of times we can hear trucks and it sounds like they're behind our house is all the time. We hear them coming down Hartford Ave. It travels right down the gas easement. And we hear them coming up Depot Street and it travels down the gas easement. There is always going to be noise there. We accept that. We knew that when we bought the house. They're basically saying, we're going to take that noise and instead of it being kind of distant, we're going to put it right in your backyard. And that, I think, is a problem. Yeah, I have, I don't even know how to really express it. I'm trying not to be yelling and stuff. But that statement just really rubbed me the very wrong way. I had other concerns that I thought of after the last meeting. I have bats in my backyard. They're really great at getting rid of the mosquitoes. Being sandwiched between two wetland areas, we get mosquitoes. There was a recent study published by a group in Connecticut that basically said, when you've got a lot of light coming from buildings, the bats won't come by. They're kind of how we keep, they kind of keep the mosquito population under control. And now they're probably going to not come back if this is built because it's going to be too much light pollution. Like, it's mostly, it's noise. It's the wildlife. It's the lights. The other thing I don't know if the planning board is aware of, if you are on the southbound side of Depot Street, we have to cross the Depot Street to get our mail every day. So additional traffic in that regard isn't just a traffic issue. It might become a safety issue for those of us crossing the yard, crossing the road. I know I personally, when I do cross it to get the mail, I'm going by sound more than I am sight because it's kind of a, it's not a true blind drive. You can see it, there's a car there. But I hear them far sooner than I can see them. And the same goes, I hear them far sooner than before they can see me. So that would just be another thing to take into consideration with additional traffic is for those of us that have to cross the road every day to get our mail. Once again, trying, not trying to be confrontational, but the comment that there is enough of a buffer and it's four hundred feet to the nearest neighbor irked me. And thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I want to appreciate the fact that you, the issues you mentioned, we were, I was unaware of the cross the street for the mail concern. I asked if you could reach out to the neighbors. I asked specifically if you could reach out to the neighbor across the road. Ma'am, Casey, have you heard from the applicant at all?
Not that I'm aware of. We have not received anything in the mail. We've had nothing slid under our door. We haven't, if there's been a phone call, they haven't left a message.
I would ask if you or Attorney Haggerty know, please reach out to her.
Mr. Chair, in that regard, at the last meeting, your fellow Platywood member suggested that I try and arrange things through Attorney Wozniak. John and I have an excellent working relationship for our careers. We've had a couple of conversations. And then I sent him a letter specifically requesting a meeting. And he and I talked about it the other day. And I think that what he's trying to do is to collect the time from his clients that we could have a meeting in general with the neighborhood. To the extent that that's not possible and you would like us to meet specifically with one or two specific individuals, then we will do that. But we have not, we did, we rehearsed your request and we have followed up on it again. As I said, John and I have had multiple conversations. And again, I think the dismissal of the, or the withdrawal of the self-petition kind of just slowed it down because I think John wanted to regroup with his clients and go over what concerns now face the north block, north scenario as opposed to both combined. But, but again, we will follow up with any particular individual on that. And I, I took good notes on, is it Ms. Haggerty? I missed the last name. Casey, I know.
It's Pettipah Haggerty. And I do want to point out that we are not among the clients for the Attorney Wozniak.
Okay.
So we would not have heard anything from you regarding that because we're not among that group of clients.
And I know I'm supposed to address to the chair, but may I ask you your specific address again? I was taking notes and I didn't get that.
Two two six.
Two two six. Depot or Depot? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think we may hear other names mentioned this evening. I would like to see if we can get that meeting facilitated as soon as possible. Ideally, perhaps before the thirteenth of November. But I would like to see that combination, if possible, a public venue and as well as Zoom. So people can address their concerns.
Yeah, and to reiterate again, that is how we try the correspondence. We absolutely will reach out individually and to talk about the comments of landscaping will absolutely work.
I understand that. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. But I do want to make sure that we address our concerns as we move forward with regard to sound, light, vegetation. She indicated that she may be the closest person.
Like she is.
And so, you know, I don't want, everyone is a concern. I don't want, you know, the little people who live, you know, five hundred feet down the road, you know, eight hundred feet down the road. Everyone is concerned. Specifically at the last meeting. We took her as everyone's concerns. But, you know, she's the first person.
No, we will absolutely, we have no issue with it. We're just trying to follow the proper channels, which is why that hasn't happened.
And unless anyone objects, I believe, are we taking down the names and addresses? And unless anyone objects, we can forward that to you. Again, unless anyone in the audience objects. I believe you are first, ma'am, then the gentleman in the back.
Thank you.
Certainly.
My name is Linda Monroe and I'm a neighbor to, I forget her name, I'm sorry.
Casey?
Yes, I'm on twenty-seven Hartford Ave and I'm right maybe a house over from her.
Okay.
And about the sound, I want to just say, my house hums all night long. I don't sleep. I put my TV on. That raises my electric. That's all I wanted to say about the sounds. I don't want to do that. But also, you're putting a light in front of my house. I wondered if you were going to do some type of air quality at my house. So I know that the fumes I'm already not receiving from all the traffic and the trucks and everything else that sit in front of my house on a daily basis is harming me. You know, the cancer cells and everything. I want to make sure that the air that I'm breathing, I can't drink the water down there. Can I breathe the air at my house?
Okay.
Twenty-seven Hartford Ave, Bellingham.
What light are you talking about?
The light that you're going to put at the corner of Bellingham and Hartford Ave.
All right. I just want to clarify.
Right.
Because I know you mentioned you were close by the railroad tracks.
I'm right next to the railroad tracks and I have the trucks. Midnight, they will come past Depot Street. And I know, I understand the light will help this. They will come back past Depot Street and back up, past my house, all the way back.
Once they go beyond it?
They go beyond it. And I know, and I know that helps the light. But it's not going to help the traffic sitting out in front of my house vibrating. The cracks in my house are unbelievable. I may send some pictures just to show you.
Okay.
You can't even open the windows and get some fresh air. It's disgusting. The dust that comes in from that traffic. You put a light there? It's, it's, I don't even know how that's going to help us. I really don't. We'll have to get a light to let us out of the driveway. Essentially, you'll have to put a light in front of my driveway. I can't get out of it now. But that's my thing, the noise, the vibration all night long, my house vibrates. Either from the trucks coming in and out Depot Street on Hartford Ave and listening to the warehouses. It's, it's pretty bad. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
So I'm Jeff Martin, two thirty Depot. So the woman at two twenty-six, I don't want to say her name wrong. So the woman at two twenty-six is, there's one, there's one house in between her house and my house. So her concerns are very similar in that regard. Obviously, I'm not quite as close as she is, but still very close. To talk about light, sound, noise, all that, right? The trees, as she said, in a month, I'm going to see, I'm going to see Dunkin's. And again, they were there before I got there. You know, I talk about people in the Ronald Family Park area being mad about them having concerts and stuff. And Donald Park was there before they, before they were born. So you can't, you can't really complain about something that was there before you. Fine. But this isn't, first of all. Second, I can see their lights. I can hear their trucks. So whatever vegetation, blocking, whatever, isn't going to matter. It's still going to be loud. It's still going to be terrible. I appreciate not having the vehicles on the road. I don't know if you, there was a video I had, I took off my dash cam that my wife was driving my car maybe a week or two ago on a Thursday or Friday morning. And there was ten trucks, I think, it's, you know. And going southbound, another truck coming northbound, actually played chicken with my wife. My wife's pregnant and, you know, this guy's playing chicken, literally playing chicken. He saw her. There's no way he didn't see her. It was morning, the light in her, my car has daytime running lights, so she definitely saw it. And she had to go over the double yellows to pass however many of these vehicles there were. And the only reason she didn't get hit is because there was a gap big enough in between two of the trucks that she was able to get in. Otherwise, he was coming right at her and he started, there was only one more truck between her and being able to get back onto the proper side of the road. So he didn't even care. So you're going to bring more of these people. He, if she, if she, if she, if she hadn't had that opportunity to pull in, she would have been hit. She could have died. My unborn child could have died. And we're going to bring more of that in. So I get that we're not going to, you know, I emailed Jim and I talked to the town administrator. And I understand that they're working with Best Buy and Dunkin's and that's not relevant to this project. But it speaks more to the inability for that area. and that's not relevant to this project, but it speaks more to the inability for that area to handle anymore. Right? Second of all. You're gonna have the trucks in the driveway. All right, they're still going to be polluting, still going to be causing tons of noise from their trucks idling. And I'm not 100% sure on how the whole driver's work time works. But I believe there's something to do with when they shut off and they have their built-in brakes, their built-in times. So that's all well and good, but I don't really know how, I'd have to do some research on exactly how that works, but I don't envision that. All I see that doing is pulling them off the road. Still going to be loud. It's still going to cause pollution. There's going to be lights at nighttime. If they're running 24 hours a day, my neighbor's going to see it. I'm going to see it. It's not helpful. It's not good. To her point, I mean, I've probably been hit, almost hit at least a dozen times in the last six months from cars and trucks flying down that road, trying to get my, trying to get my mail going across the street. I mean, I gotta, I gotta look back and forth about 40 times, you know, so look left, look right, look left again. That's like multiply that by 20, 30 times. That's really where you're at is there's a little hump that comes up going towards Hartford. As you go over the train tracks, the road turns to your left and then there's a little hump that you see. I cannot see cars. Like I'll look and then I'll walk across the road and I'm like, where did that car come from? So either they were flying, which is wrong, or they were 100% blind and introducing more trucks isn't going to help. And sure, we've eliminated half of it, but we're still looking at 400, 400 vehicles a day. That's, that's not right. Second. For some people who don't realize, class rating the road F to B doesn't really mean it's better. I, I want to read what it means just so people who, I'm sure you guys and women understand where it is because I know you guys do a great job and really work hard. And I didn't say that about you, about you guys, and I feel terrible that somebody said that about you. I really do, but I certainly didn't. I know the group of people I sent, I'm sending over here with did not do that.
I appreciate it, but it would send it.
No, no, of course. Unfortunately, anybody can say something.
I agree, sir.
Okay. So just so people know, class grade F means that high operation, high control delay values that often occur with oversaturation. Poor progression, long cycle lengths may also be major contributing causes to such delays. So that's F, that's where it's at now. So basically it means it's terrible to go on, as far as I understand. LOS B describes operations with relatively low control delay. However, more vehicle stops than LOS A. LOS A is operations with very little, low control delay. Most vehicles do not stop at all. So really all it's doing is making it easier to get on and off of Depot Street. Because basically you're not sitting there trying to wait for a gap to, to get through, to get on the road. It doesn't make traffic better. It staggers it maybe, but people are going to turn on and they're going to do the same thing they do now. Maybe easier in some ways because people are going to go straight across Grove. Cross Hartford and just really done it. So that's not going to make it really any better. Sure, it'll be maybe easier for the trucks to turn onto the road. Maybe it'll be easier for me to turn onto the road. But it's not going to make it better. It's just going to change how, it's just going to change the flow. That's not, that's not. My other big issue that I've been noticing a lot this year especially is the litter. You brought up the, the, the urine bottles, but there's cigarette wrapper, there's cigarette containers, there's fast food wrappers, there's anything you can imagine that somebody might have in their vehicle all over the road. It's moderate. I probably pick out three or four pieces of trash out of my, out of my yard every week. But as you go down towards the proposed new building, if you look into the, into the, to the woods over there, I mean, there's boxes of, boxes of beer cans and the little ubiquitous fireball, uh, shot bottles. And maybe that, hopefully that's not the truck drivers, but, but still it more speaks of how much traffic and how terrible that is. And I've seen truck drivers throw it on. I've seen them throw stuff out their windows all the time. I've seen them taking notes and they pull, they pull over in front of my house. I sit there for 45 minutes to an hour. And then when they leave, I notice things that are out on the road, whether it's food wrappers or, or what have you. These drivers that they're going to bring in, I understand that they can't control that. They're going to do the same thing. So really, instead of picking up three or four items out of my yard, would pick up 10 items out of my yard every week. I, I don't understand how that's okay. And, you know, it, it's just, it's just disgusting, really. There's and I, by the way, I called that 24 hours. I knew they were going to do that. If you look back on the record last time, I specifically said they were going to do that. And I knew they were going to do that. And all that is
I told them we're going to hold them.
Yeah. And all that is, is their ploy to, oh, well, we decreased the overall warehouse space. But you doubled maybe more the amount of time it's open. So really. You didn't really help the situation. You said, we're just going to have more. So instead of having fixed hours where it's going to be in. You can only, you only have a certain amount of throughput that you can do from eight to five. 24, I work in, I work in Gillette and downtown Boston, in South Boston. So I know what a 24 operation is. All the time. Always. It's, it's this eight to five would have been better. But doing 24, you're going to have more shopping. I'd be interested to see really what the decrease in projected traffic would be. Going from the eight, from the two, three buildings, eight to five, to the one building 24/7. I, I bet it isn't cut in half. If, if we went from, if we went from 500,000, I'm just, you know, off estimating, we went from 500,000 square foot of property to 250,000 square foot of property, right? Well, I don't think we're going down from roughly 600 cars. Again, I'm a little bit higher. I think it was like 550 or 580 or something like that. It's off the top of my head, 500, 600 easier. I bet it didn't go down to 300. So we're still going to be, you know, there's some reduction on, on top of that. The vegetation, the mitigation, the no power is it'll, it'll be terrible. It'll be, it'll be terrible. Somebody will die if this goes in, I'm sure of it. The, the way that street is now, it's, it's, it's at a critical point. Where if you add anything more and something, somebody dies, I hope you feel that.
Do I respond soon?
Certainly.
And I'm not putting you on the spot.
No, no, I, I'll just respond to certain things and not others. And just
Or do you want to wait till the end?
No, I just, I'll, I'll, I'll hit one. Again, I just want to reiterate, I've, I've already said it, the, the hours was a mistake on my end. It was not a ploy. It wasn't something to be, to be trivial. It was a mistake on my end, which is why we're bringing that on the record, on the record now. And there will be a full traffic report, which will be fully vetted by, by your independent peer reviewer and we can address any comments relative to that.
I'm sure Attorney Antonell's is well aware. As we do a traffic study. This board looks at worst case scenario. We're extremely conservative in our approach. We've done that for all the developments, the warehouses, the community tenants so far. So as we go down that road, we are looking at, you know, projections. I believe, Brian, you've seen, we've always looked at worst case. So that is something we'll look at. The gentleman that just spoke. Can I make a request? When you have videos, anything you want to have added to the meeting?
Yep.
Please send it to Jim. We're trying to do it Friday before our meeting.
Okay.
So we can figure a way to upload it.
Yep.
So that everyone here can see it.
Sure.
And everyone zooming can see it.
I, I did send
We're trying to do that and we may try to see if there's a mechanism this evening where the recent video on Depot Street can be shown. I believe it's a couple of minutes long. And I'll, at the end of the public comments, I'll see if we can do that. But as we move forward, so everyone can get an opportunity to look at things. We can try to coordinate with the, the planning board, the office.
Yeah.
So we can facilitate that and upload it as best we can. Anyone else?
May I ask a question?
Certainly, sir.
You had mentioned that you look at the worst case scenario for traffic?
Yes, sir.
My question is, given that we're looking at an F grade of traffic now, then how did Best Buy and Dunkin' Donuts get by if it's caused such a chaotic, ir, no, irreparable traffic?
I can't speak to what happened before this board. That was, I think, before anyone in this board or select. But with regards to the Maple Street development, the two warehouses and Mechanic Street. We have looked at worst case scenario. We don't take the applicant's numbers per se. We look at a worst case scenario. Then they're applying. I don't believe our peer reviewer is here, but he can articulate that or someone else in the board can, or Jim can. But we do not look at their numbers being. We look at what's, what could be worse.
Okay, so I understand.
And what happened before, and I, I can't speak to, and it's not fair to hold this board.
No, I'm not. It was, it's just a question because worst case scenario would have stopped Best Buy and Dunkin' Donuts from going in, so.
Presumably.
Presumably. So worst case scenario on top of a worst case scenario means that there shouldn't be anything.
They're not necessarily, you know, we will see whatever the, it is a whole process that has to be done.
Okay.
And, you know, we explained that at the last meeting and it is a process that takes steps in time. We certainly do, do not want to rush through this. For the benefit of the neighbors and the town. But bear in mind, and as, you know, as we said at the last meeting, this is zone residential. Our zoning bylaws, our zoning sparks may be somewhat antiquated. But it's, it's what we are dealing with in the present. Yeah, same, same thing on Maple Street. And further on this evening, you'll hear about trying to rezone part of Maple Street to remove some industrial. So, you know. This board has listened. We've rezoned some property in town to remove industrial land to make it residential. So sorry, it tried and it failed. It tried a town meeting, how many, Jim, how many years ago?
I'm sorry, for Depot Street?
Yes.
That was, yeah, a few years ago and it, it did fail. Mr. Chairman, I do have one more question here online if, if you had time before we wrap it up. There's a Chris, Chris Foster?
Yes.
Hi, I'm at Three Weathersfield Road. Can you hear me?
I can.
All right. So I'm at Three Weathersfield Road and I, I think I remember you just saying earlier that you were going to hold them to less hours. Did you say that or am I wrong?
No, at the initial meeting. They said they were going to be eight to five.
Oh.
I indicated I would hold you. We were going to hold you to that as you went through this process.
Okay, because when you
that an error was made.
Right, okay.
Initial proposal about the hours of operation.
Okay, because when Dauphine's
I'm not pleased with it.
You were going to hold Dauphines to those hours and you haven't because they're running 24/7 now.
Again, Dauphines, I believe, have, this board has not had Dauphines come in front of them.
A couple of years ago, I thought, no.
Dauphines was before the zoning board. It's a different board. I, it's easy to know. They look, they, they do look the same, I know, but.
Thanks, Jim.
So also, the trash and the litter, I have more truck parts on the side of my yard that I don't even want to mow the lawn because I've already gone through two sets of blades on my mower. Just from stuff I can't see. I gotta go out and pick trash before I can even mow my lawn. It's ridiculous. And there's been two accidents that have come right up onto our yard from the, all the traffic.
All right.
People trying to get in and out of Weathersfield Road. It's ridiculous. Already, and we are going to add more to it.
Ma'am, I wish I could specifically address the concerns on your street, but I, I don't know, and I'm sure you don't know what, what trucks are causing it. I, I feel bad that it happens.
Well, I don't know what truck, what parts, but I mean, it's just great.
If you see something, ma'am. Contact, um I guess the safety officer or Cumberland Farms if you have a license. I have some ideas for Depot Street as we move down the road on how to deal with this. That will come out at future meetings, but just to give you an overview, I may ask that there be a residential committee setup of residents that can meet periodically with the tenant who is there, if it is approved, to go over their concerns with regards to items that have been raised.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully it can be proactive. And I don't know how we can deal with, with Best Buy and Dunkin' Donuts other than to, you know, we request it, but at this point, you know, that, that was, you know, run a few laps, so to speak. And I apologize, you know, for what's happening on your front yard. I would just recommend that if you can get a license plate and the vendor, you can notify them.
If I were to sit out there all day, I guess I could.
I, I know, ma'am. Anyone else in the audience? Let me start with the woman in the back. Certainly.
The original proposal, they were talking about the driveway access to these warehouses and they were looking to go to the zoning board. I understand that got dropped.
Correct.
The change and now only the one warehouse, what is the proposal, what is the access going to be to get to it from Depot Street? Is it the same location, a different location?
It's a different location. Can you answer that, sir?
Absolutely. The, the south side had a separate driveway than the north side, so dropping the, the south side, that, that driveway goes away. The north side parcel, the driveway is still, it's still the same.
Is it in between Dunkin' and?
No, that was the south, that was, yes, that was.
So where is this located? Is it on the Hartford Ave side of the tracks?
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty close to right where the, the tracks are and the gasses.
I believe we have set a plant here.
Basically around the
That's what a board member is trying to determine that. If we can provide that to the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's one other in online here if you want to take that.
We also have someone else in the audience. For future meetings, if you can bring your plot plan, so we can call it up.
Yeah, and we can call it up online.
I believe, I believe it's being explained to her now.
Yeah. We're planning to share it on the screen. I can bring the card on.
Okay. Mr. Hamley, well, she's being shown the plans. You said you have a question?
Question, it's just a concept, so.
Will you stand up and leave the X mark over here, sir?
Ken Hamley, 39 Weathersfield Road. If you, if you can look back, it's some history.
It's my own side. I don't want your question either. I just want to give you your banner, sir.
Thank you.
Ma'am, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ken Hamley, 39 Weathersfield Road. 25 years ago, when that land was, Depot Street was rezoned. The people on Depot Street and Box Pond Drive, 25 years ago, had their quality of life ruined when that first power plant went in. Okay, and then And then, that was before twenty-five years ago. Go back twenty-five years ago, we almost had a second power plant there. So Depot Street's been under attack for a long time. You've got warehouses now. What a story about urine bottles being... How would you like, how would all of us like urine bottles on our front yard? Would you trade places with these people? I wouldn't. My God, this is quality of life issues. And their quality of life gets us, right now, it's a straight F. And if this thing goes through, their quality of life is out the window. This is a no-brainer. Listen to these people. These people are hurting. And they've been there for years, and they're talking about moving, and with the first meeting, the guy's ready to sell his house. Have some compassion for these people. These people are hurting. That's all I got to say.
Yes, sir.
Bill Heber, Box Pond Road, 6 Box Pond Road. I just have a question. You guys have told us all to do our due diligence, which we all have. And as I know it was already spoken of, but you held him to his word about those hours. I run a small company. I work for bigger companies. These guys work for multi-million dollar companies. Have you ever made that billion-dollar company, sorry? If you've ever slipped that mistake and you didn't know about those hours, you'd be fired in a heartbeat. So he can say he didn't know about it. It's... Sorry, but it's not true. He would get fired if he didn't know. Now, if we have to do our due diligence, and you're holding him to his word, how come they don't have to? You also said, "Go to your neighbors, follow your fellow neighbors around, alert them." None of us were alerted. Last time they tried to alert any of us was through a certified letter. Certified letters are supposed to be locked up at your door, try to be notified and signed for. We have a Ring camera most likely, everybody. These guys just stuck it right in our mailboxes, no attempt for any type of signature. It's a little card smaller than this.
I didn't get anything. I apologize. I didn't get anything.
It went right into one of our flyers. If I had gotten, if I opened that mail, it went right into the trash. Like, I actually opened that, and we saw it. And if that's how they're going to try to alert the people that are about this and that they're supposed to be cared for, they should start being held accountable for some of the stuff you guys are saying. That's all I have to say.
I just... Is there a way? I'm on the butters list. I didn't see anything. Maybe it was, like you said, maybe it was in the junk mail or something like that. It was in between pages or something. I looked at it. Through the recycling, because, you know, I mean, we all know how much junk you get, right? Maybe it was in there. I tried to look through it, but maybe it was in between papers or something. I never got one thing to sign to tell me that I was in a butter. And I'm on the butters list. I found my name on the website. So I understand that everybody was supposedly contacted, but I never got anything. I spoke to my wife. She never got it. She never saw anything, got anything, whatever. It would have come to me, because my name's on the mortgage, so it definitely would have come to me. And she does not throw away my mail, even stuff that's very obviously junk. She doesn't throw away anything with my name on it, even stuff that's like, you know, that she knows I moved on. She doesn't throw away. So I never got anything. Is there a way to make sure that, is there...
We'll address that momentarily.
So I believe the mailing that's being referred to is the town notification mail by certified mail. That wasn't a separate mailing. That was just part of the process where the neighbors are notified. As a process, they're supposed to be notified really.
What is the area that you use for notification?
Mr. Chairman, it's 300 feet. It's 300 feet from the property line, and we do have, Amy can pull it up, you know, not, obviously not tonight, but certified record. We get those receipts before opening the hearing, so we have all those receipts.
Jim, without doing a violation, I assume it is a standardized letter, except for the address, correct?
Right, so each and everybody that's 300 feet away from the property get the public hearing notice. So that's that hearing that notice that the board reads in the beginning of the meeting to notify everyone in attendance of what the project is and what's before the board. So everyone, it's a statutory requirement of Mass General law that everyone 300 feet gets this notice. And so I, you know, just from doing this for a while, I know we, this isn't the first time that we've had concerns about the post office in Bellingham. I'm not saying that that was the case, but we can certainly go back and verify that at least the applicant has submitted, you know, these notices and mailed them out. And we should have all the receipts for all of them.
All right. Sure, I've noticed that the people in Depot Street are pretty tech-savvy, so to speak.
Yes.
What I would recommend, Jimmy, is that notice public?
I'm sorry, which notice?
Is that, that public notice is online, correct?
The public notice, yes. It's online. It's in the application. It was in the paper. It's, yeah, but we can print a copy of it.
I did find my name on the butters list, on the website, in the submitted documents. So I did find my name on that list, but I wouldn't have...
All right. So what I would suggest, as I said, you're all pretty tech-savvy. I understand you may have a Facebook page. If one person gets a letter, just let everyone know, so you can download the letter for people within 300 feet or people beyond 300 feet, because it is a public notice. So I think that may be one way to alleviate that problem in the future as these notices start to go out. You can communicate with one another and take a picture of what is on the public website so other neighbors can see it and be aware. So I think that may nip it in the bud, and we will...
It was more of a, I would have had more time ahead of time. It was like I was caught, like, on...
I understand. So if we have to do any other noticing?
Yeah.
If you could just, you know, work with you and your neighbors and try to do that. When someone had mentioned crossing the street for the mailboxes, you know, I had a brandy aside here, you know, maybe move in the mailboxes.
I don't know. I don't know.
The postal post office beyond Bellingham for a while and other developments. And it takes years.
Yeah.
So it didn't fall on deaf ears. We'll see what we can do, but that is...
It's bad.
If someone says, "That's above my pay grade," to move the mailbox.
When I tell you it's bad, it's bad.
Okay.
I mean, it's legitimately frightening.
I understand.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
And I appreciate you saying that it's difficult. I do appreciate that.
I can only imagine. I just have to walk down Coliseum Street.
Of course.
I just want to add that there's a school bus stop, Melanie Wentzville, 48 Box Pond Road.
Thank you.
There's a school bus stop. My son has to walk down Box Pond, cross Depot Street, that's over there at the American Cent entrance. So that, you know, it's not just the Melbar, but it's also children.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's a gentleman, Mr. Robinson, who's been waiting patiently online.
I'll talk to see if we can put additional signage there. I don't know if that will help, but I'll see what we can do. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sure, we can.
Great, great. How are you doing tonight?
Doing fine, sir.
Good. I just have a couple of questions. I'm going to try to keep this brief. Okay, first question, would through the traffic to 126 be part of this sound study or the study of traffic? Okay, right now, what I've been hearing all night is a traffic light at the end of Depot Street onto Hartford Ave. What about the other exit? Is that part of the study? Is that considered?
Jim, I believe that's another study, correct?
You're referring to the downtown intersection?
Correct.
Right, so that is part of the traffic study. The applicant's had, when we're referring to a signal, obviously, that are referring to that end of it, but noted, you know, it's certainly part of the intersections that they are required to study, and our peer review will be looking at that and evaluating the impacts of that intersection as well, I'm sure. Just as a note for everyone, since we're talking about it, our peer review engineer had noted to me that he likely could have traffic analysis back to the board for the November meeting. So I think that would be an appropriate time to actually dive into the details of traffic at that time.
Yeah, but my question is, how realistic is that? Really? Okay.
We won't know until we get the traffic study back.
Okay, because everybody's, everybody's working towards the Hartford Ave side. And I haven't heard any, any input as far as the 126 side. And that's what is a little puzzling to me. Okay, secondly, is the sound study? Okay, now, the sound study that, and I guess I refer this to the applicant, is, are they including sound study of just the traffic noise? Are they also including the sound of signals of loading and unloading vehicles? Okay, I live on Hartford Ave. Okay, off of Hartford Ave, I should say, Cathy Drive. And I hear loading and unloading from even Home Depot from the distance that I am. Okay, and I'm wondering if that's going to be part of the sound study that they're going to be conducting. Okay, and this is a concern to me, not so much for me, but for more of the residents that are around there, because we're talking decibels that are extremely high, high-frequency noise. And once the leaves fall off the trees, there's no buffer there. There's absolutely no buffer, and you will hear it. And if these are going to be running 24/7, you're going to be hearing them at 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. Okay, I just want that to be part of the concerns, and that's why I'm bringing it up here.
Mr. Chairman, I can take that one. For the sound study, the board typically requires, you know, all exterior noise, so HVAC system, backup alarms, the docks going up and down, all of that would be evaluated by their sound study engineer. And then, again, just like traffic, just like stormwater, we'll procure our own sound engineer who will vet those numbers and propose some, again, those mitigation measures if there are any to assist in that.
I'm sure, and for the audience, just to prevent any further questions, the people who do our peer review are decided by us, not decided by the applicant. So much so that the applicant has to pay for this study. So he pays for his own, and he pays for the town study. And the person who does our town study is independent of the applicant. The only thing other independent is that the fact he has to pay for. And they do exchange information, but we are rather specific about that. And other warehouses, and I apologize to board members that I did not allow you to interject, we will look at removing the backup alarms and using swish sounds as long as they are safe, providing a lower decibel for backing up during 24 hours. I think I mentioned that to you at the last meeting. So we're going to look at all options that are available to us on the table to reduce any sounds coming from that property. Again, as Jim said, HVAC, opening doors, slamming doors. It gets so refined as to even hooking up the trailers. The process of not just backing up, but the trailer going on to the truck. So it is, they're rather comprehensive.
So you're telling me that during off-peak hours that you're able to lower the decibels on loading, unloading trucks, vehicles?
No, I didn't say off-peak hours. We're going to request that during the hours when they're backing up, they use a swish signal, which is relatively new, as opposed to the backup alarms on the trucks.
Okay, that's something new to me. I've never heard of it, but I'll take your word as it is.
Jim, can you articulate that better than I can?
No, I think you did a good job. It's, you know, the analyst is looking at what the noise sources are, how, what the decibels are, and if there's any site mitigation in order to manage that sound. So again, buffering, burns, rotating buildings. You know, there's a whole host of different options that the engineers may promote, and it's up to the board to consider it, but, you know, again, this is yet another one of those where we got to get the plans, we got to get the engineers on board, and then we can look at those facts and numbers and come to a determination.
Okay, no, I appreciate that insight. I...
So just letting you know where we are. In the process of looking at a previous warehouse, it was recommended by a neighbor that they do not use the swish, they do not use the backup alarm. They used flaggers. I've been in the rest management business my entire career, half of it dealing with truckers, and I would not recommend flaggers on a warehouse. It is far too dangerous. So we eliminated that from the discussion. But there are quieter alarms that the decibel does not spread out as much as the backup ones. So we're going to take that into consideration as well.
No, I appreciate that insight. I'll look at it.
Oh, no, no need to apologize, sir.
Third, I need, and I apologize for this, but I need someone to educate me. Was Dunkin' Donuts and Best Buy was to have limit hours?
I can tell you no one in the board or Jim was around at that point in time, so I don't know.
I'm happy to look at the decision and verify. I don't believe so, but I certainly can verify that. And if they do, we can certainly ramp up enforcement.
Yeah, that's my, that's my question, and again, I don't want to hear that it was a board, a board before you guys, you know, this is legacy, all right?
I understand, sir, but you know...
It appeared to.
If it's there, we will adhere to it. So we cannot make, you know, unfortunately, retroactive, we can ask for things.
And again, I apologize. I should probably know this, being, living in this town this long, but again, I just wanted to bring up that point.
Yes, I appreciate that, and we will look at the documents. And we will approach both those companies to alert them about the concerns with noise, traffic, and the litter.
All right, another question. Was traffic to be 50/50 Hartford Ave 126 at the time of DND and Best Buy?
That's another one. I believe it was, I remember reading through the minutes of this one, and they were discussing that at great length. I don't think it ended up being in the conditions that they were required to, because the, you know, the facts of what can and can't happen. But again, I'm happy to look at and report back to the board and report back to the safety officer if that is the case.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that, and also I'd be interested in how was this to be monitored? How was it to be adhered to? Okay, you know, everything's going out through Hartford Ave now. And I think anybody to say differently is just turning a blind eye to it. Okay, now, we have only controls of what's in our town Okay, now, we have only controls of what's in our town by the surrounding towns. Okay, we can't control them. All we can control is the traffic within our town. Milford, Mendon, Oakdale, Blackstone are going to grow. Okay, and when they're going to grow, the traffic's going to grow to 495, and you know that as well as I do. Everyone on this call knows that. Okay? And if you're going to add additional traffic with warehouses down the road off of Hartford Ave, it's just going to add exponentially, and you know that. I'm not telling anybody anything different. There's no arithmetic that's going to make it change. Okay, so that's why we're counting on you. You are the people we voted in. Okay, you are the people we entrusted. You need to help us. Help the town. This is getting ridiculous off of Hartford Ave. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Help us, please.
Thank you, sir. And, you know, we are listening to the neighbors, and we're going through this process.
Mr. Chairman, if I may remind you, we do have a, a long agenda with several warrants to discuss.
Any other comments? Yes.
Sorry, I'll be quick. I actually did send a link with about 10 videos and handful of pictures to Amy that she shared with you. I was under the impression that it was going to be shown tonight.
We do not have the capability to do it.
Okay, I, I could have provided that if I had known I sent this video.
Okay.
But I do want to say, the lady over there did see about the bus stop in those pictures. You'll see one of the buses coming down, having to cross a double line and tossing all the tractor trailer trucks to get through. I mean, this bus is full of children, so that is very.
That is one of the, I believe I did see that, but I, as I said earlier, if we can just try to, Amy will work with us on this. If you get to us about a week in advance, it would be greatly appreciated if we have time.
She had my emails, so whatever you guys need from me, I'll provide it.
Okay, and we, we do not want to discourage you. I want to encourage you to give us the information you have. Also, if you have an avenue to provide it to the safety officer, please do. I did speak to the town manager, and the impression I received is the police department may not have received a lot of phone calls about this. So I encourage you to call the safety officer, we will, I said that at the last meeting. We've gotten him on board with this process. They're outlining a process for ticketing and putting signs up there. So we certainly are listening to you and, and, you know, trying to help through this process.
I do know one person, she, she's not here right now, but she did say that at one point, she was trying to cross the double line, and she had called the police, and they said, can you pass, can you get through? And she's like, well, yeah, and they're like, okay, well, that's all we can do. So I'm just.
I understand. I appreciate that. Ma'am, and then in the back, we will see if we can put additional signage there that marks the bus stop. I don't know, I don't know if they'll pay attention, but we'll look into that. We will try to reach out to DPW. If any signs can be, whatever, approaching the bus stop.
One more thing. Sorry.
It's sorry.
The Facebook page, I did create, Bellingham, protect Bellingham.
I appreciate that.
But I just want to say, that is about knowledge and people just coming together, collecting videos and every, and I know what comment you're talking about. I think that was on Bellingham Unplugged, because I had posted on that, too. Wasn't anybody part of that group? I just.
I know, I appreciate.
Because I do know what comment that was, that wasn't any of us, and I do apologize. I just wanted to let you guys know that, that is not our agenda. You know, our purpose of this was to just get people involved and, you know, just know what's going on with the town and.
And we certainly encourage that, but you can imagine how, I'm just, just speaking for myself, how you would feel if you'd be accusing of being correct.
I realize that, and again, that wasn't on our personal Facebook. We have page.
I, I certainly encourage you to do that. And as I said, you know, as further mailings go out, work amongst one another to share that information to people beyond the 300.
And I did say at one point that you guys were on everybody, you know, the resident's side and your kids, so I just.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we need to move on.
We need to continue.
Yes, I would like to have a motion for a continuance to November 18.
18.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of continuance to November 18, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Again, I cannot thank you enough for your participation. Please continue. There'll be a public notice going out.
We don't send another public notice about the meeting. No.
No, but the, the site visit, has that gone out?
We don't send that, that, we don't send that topic.
Okay, but it's posted.
That has not been posted yet.
Will be posted prior to.
Yes.
So there will be a walkthrough on, on November 13th, I believe, at night?
Yes, correct, correct. At the site.
At the site.
Yes.
So again, I can't reiterate this, you know, thank you very much for your participation and those people online and the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will take a five-minute recess.
Sounds good.
So we can move on to the.
Warner.
If you hear of any of those, please feel free to stay. Thank you for coming.
All right, Chairman, thank you. Thanks for coming, thanks for being here. Did a hell of a job.
I'd like to bring the meeting back to order. We could, please sit down, and we have a couple warrant articles to go through. I know it's been a long evening already. If anyone else is outside in the hall, please feel free to come in and sit down and close the door in case they're out there having additional discussion. Jim, tonight we're supposed to go through the three warrant articles. In regards to the article concerning the zoning district, we have a document that's provided to us for our review concerning the rules and procedures. And we all have an opportunity to look at that.
If we're just a point of order, Bill, if we could just read each one of the, the public hearing notices separately, so I believe Maple Street is on first on the agenda, so if we could read the hearing notice, open the meeting, and then make a motion on any waiver requests, that would be appreciated.
I'd like to open the public meeting for the article for the zoning district. Robert, you have the article in front of you, you can read that for the public, it would be greatly appreciated.
Sure. So pursuant to the Town of Bellingham zoning bylaws, the procedural rules of the Town of Bellingham Planning Board and Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5. The Town of Bellingham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 28th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Arcan Meeting Room, 10 Mechanic Street, Bellingham, Mass, 02019. There is also a Zoom link provided. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on a proposed town meeting warrant article initiated by the planning board to amend the Town of Bellingham zoning bylaws and zoning map. The proposal recommends amending the Town of Bellingham zoning bylaws and zoning map by changing the zoning district to the following addresses slash parcels from the industrial district to suburban district. 240 Maple Street, parcel 37 Lot 4, 236 Maple Street, parcel 37 Lot 5, 244 Maple Street, parcel 37 Lot 4-3, parcel 37 Lot 4-4, 260 Maple Street, parcel 37 Lot 4-1, 306 Maple Street, parcel 37 Lot 6A, 6B, and 4-3C, and parcel 47 Lot 3. The current proposed amendment, including the maps depicting the proposed amendments to the Town of Bellingham zoning bylaws and zoning map, may be inspected at the Planning and Zoning Office or Town Clerk's Office, both in Municipal Center, 10 Mechanic Street, Bellingham, Mass, 02019, during regular municipal center business hours. For questions, please contact the town planner at 508-657-2892. Amendments are also available for review on the town's website.
Jim, can you give us an overview of why we're here this evening?
Apparently, could I just have a motion open the hearing?
Do I have a second? Open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion for approval, second. All in favor of the public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, that motion passes unanimously.
And then I believe you have a document, a request from the chair for a specific waivers to the procedural rules?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept that?
Absolutely. Second. We're motion for, in regard to waivers for this process, we've had an opportunity to read it. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, that motion passes.
Excellent, and so, yeah, so tonight, as, as Robert mentioned, we're here for the town article for the rezoning of Maple Street. It may sound familiar, because we discussed this just a few years back, the very, a very similar article that was petitioned and later voted unanimously by a town meeting to support. But stepping back before that, this discussion of rezoning of Maple Street has actually taken place for several years, you know, ever since I've been here, so starting in 2015, and, and certainly predates me regarding the, the impacts that industrial has, has had on Maple Street and the concerns that this board has expressed through its site design and review, knowing that industrial by right is allowed, and, you know, certain aspects of that the board can manage, but others perhaps you cannot, you know, much of what we've had been talking about this evening. So over the years, you know, this board has taken the initiative to try and be proactive and start to address the concerns of the residents and align its infrastructure with its intended uses, its zoning uses that are allowed. In 2019, early 2019, the planning board, this board initiated a rezoning of Maple Street north of 495. Shortly thereafter, before the town could even get back to it, a petition article was made for south of 495. And actually, I'll share my screen now and show you the map of what we're talking about here. As you guys know, you have maps in front of you in your package, but nevertheless, this, it's always fun to do the interactive maps here. So, so, you know, zooming out a little bit here, so we all know Bellingham well, 495 cuts right through that northern tip of, of Bellingham. You know, over the years, Bellingham has looked at our, our zoning, and in Maple Street, again, if we turn on our zoning layers, you'll see a lot of yellow appear here shortly, and that is because all of this area is now suburban zone. That used to be industrially zoned, and there were lots of concerns on additional impacts to Maple Street. So the, the.
People see that? If you want to move your chair so you can see it on here.
Oh, sorry, yes, yeah, people at home can see it, and anybody, yeah, welcome to take a peek at the, the road here, the map here. So this is the northern side of, of Maple Street, the north of 495, that the planning board sought to rezone, and again, was approved unanimously at town meeting. Shortly thereafter, a petition article was made to seek rezoning of, one sec, there we go, of the parcels down here. So as we guys, as we all know, this is Stonehead Road with a suburban zoning district. The planning board over the years had had many developments before them, Victory, Amazon, 7-Eleven, and Snyder. And so the thought was to look at furthering the rezoning from north of 495 on down Maple Street. So this proposal will now continue that suburban zoning district, south of 495, on the east side of Maple Street only, to suburban for these parcels here that were stated by, by Robert during the public hearing notice. This is the neighborhood already, and this is the last item to, to bookend, to add the suburban zoning there. All these right here are residents as well, but that's not part of the zoning, it's just the east side of Maple Street here from. It's just the east side of Maple Street here from between the railroad tracks of four ninety five. Some specific things that we should know, as the planning board already knows, looking at this corridor very intently for for many years, is this is the town line right here. This is the town line. And so there is very limited frontage here in Bellingham for these parcels, but they do drag on into Franklin quite dramatically with a lot of upland. You know, so again, this is a burden on the public way of Bellingham with very little gain for Bellingham, just as a gentleman mentioned at the last hearing about all the trucks that may come from Hope Dale and Milford and the like. And we have no say over it. Well, this is an opportunity to say, you know, Bellingham has limited, you know, area here and so not much to gain and all the impacts that would come to Maple Street. So that is, you know, that is clearly why, you know, plant, the planning board thought to take this this issue back up and bring it to town meeting. Again, this was a petition article two years ago. Unfortunately, Clercler has brought it to for us to bring it again, but at town meeting, just two years ago, was unanimously supported there as well. So I'm happy to take any questions tonight. Again, the 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 ultimate vote is whether or not to recommend to town meeting to support this article or not. And that would be written in the in the warrant.
And Jim, the action that takes place tonight, approve or deny, regardless, it moves forward to the town meeting for the ultimate decision to be made by those people at the town meeting.
That's correct, yes.
And any of the our warrants we deal with tonight, the ultimate decision is made at the town meeting.
Correct.
I, is there anyone in the public that would like to talk on behalf in regards to the Maple Street rezoning? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Arthur Scalise. I own property at three oh six Maple Street, which is one of the parcels under consideration for the rezoning. When we purchased this property in two thousand seventeen, it was commercial industrial zone. We had it with the intent of doing a privately held self-storage or public portable storage company. We are traffic speaking to what's going on here would do little and no effect. We own a portable storage company now in Milford. We've owned one in Optin and the traffic mitigation was was unseen, forty cars maybe a lot. We do not do trucking. We do not deal with the general public as far as moving articles in and out just private. The, I don't know, Mr., the planning board, Mr. Cup, is it?
Yes.
Sir. Um, it was not just a clerical error. There was a, the land court found in our favor that the town was incorrect in the rezoning issue and we won. You have since then brought the article back forth. If we had known two years ago that this was going to come forward, we would have been and opposed it. We did not know. We were never told. We spent two years now fighting this issue. The area there is already almost entirely commercial industrial. Prior to Amazon coming in, there was no concern about those particular businesses, which are also probably here tonight, I believe. And ours wouldn't have changed it at all. We live, we are right across the street from Amazon. They'll produce forty cars in ten minutes. We don't believe that this is going to affect the town's life, their approach. It's simply going to take away from us what we in good faith purchased, would have redeveloped property. We've already done it in several communities. We have a very good reputation. It would have been done properly. It would have been done effectively and we would certainly adhere to any of the town's concerns. I just don't feel it's fair that because of the Amazon decision, with Campagnelli, that we should have to suffer for this. It will grossly affect my family, myself, our business. We were going through to the town, we knew exactly what we were going to do. We've had several meetings with town officials, Mr. Cupka, he knew what we were going to do and they still went forward with this. We feel that the town should look at this seriously and consider our position was one side of Maple Street that they're looking to change. It's going to directly affect me. All the existing businesses there, they're already up and operational. It's not going to affect them at all. I'm going to take this property that I paid a premium for. It's going to be utterly useless because I can't sell a house across the street from Amazon, much to what these people are saying now that their property values are going to go down. If this goes through, my property value is going to go. It's going to be almost useless to me and that's not your problem, but that's not why I purchased the property. I purchased it knowing what the zoning was. We knew exactly it was allowable. You just, you change it before we can get it done. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the in the public or here this evening?
Sure. Why, I'm actually Tom Carlo. Nice to meet everybody. I'm directly across from Amazon. We built the building in two thousand and one. Obviously, commercial, don't comprehend why you would want to go that route other than to keep people from building into Franklin. This is, this, this explanation doesn't quite, you know, make sense to me. We're in Bellingham. Your zone commercial, why, why would you want to go to suburbia and and take away your commercial building? You're following, now, the building in usage is less if you do that. You know, you can't have certain tenants rent from you or put business in there. Now, here's something that's, you know, over twenty years have been on Maple Street, long before anything was there, long before these big buildings came in. And my point is, what purpose does it do? I I don't comprehend. Someone has to explain that to me, you know?
I will ask when you're done, I'll ask Jim to.
Yeah, again, to reiterate, I, you know, this gentleman's situation, I didn't, never met him before, but I feel for him because everybody, you know, obviously is trying to do well for their family as well as himself and that's what we're all here for. We're on earth for one reason, right? You want to try to help the people that you're with. So with that said, someone would have to clarify the purpose of this zoning change, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One like before Jim answers your question. Is there anyone else here this evening?
Good evening. Thank you. Paul Doherty, D and D Mulch and Landscape, two thirty six Maple Street.
Just for a point of clarification, I received an email. I'm sorry, text message from Mr. Door, actually, Mr. Door, asking if he could participate this evening. I responded in the affirmative to him. He placed a phone call to me yesterday, thanking for me for that. We had a discussion about the overview and the genesis of this warrant prior to this evening. And I mentioned that I would, you know, to be transparent, just let the board know that we spoke briefly yesterday.
Thank you.
And thank you for reaching out.
Can I, can I just mention too, my husband has bought Mulch from me before, so he did receive an email as well in regards to this meeting as a master.
Thank you. I just, we want, we want to be very transparent.
Okay. I've been at the property for sixteen years now. I bought the property when it was zone, commercial, you know, industrial. It's been commercial use for this business for almost forty years. So to have, you know, people don't buy a residential house and then sixteen years after they buy a residential house, they say, we're going to zone your neighborhood now, commercial, and we're going to put an Amazon right next to you. It's one thing to do and I understand what the board is trying to do and in a perfect world, we could have all the businesses on the east side of town and we could have all the residents on the west side. And unfortunately, we can't do that and you guys have a hard job. But to take a business that's existed, it's one thing to take a business that's no one's there yet and you can control the land. But to take and rezone afterward there, to me, it's just like, I'm going to put up something right next to your house when it wasn't zoned out. And I don't understand and maybe somebody can explain to me, how does this get on town meeting if the, if if you guys don't approve this and send this to town meeting? I'm not sure how it gets there.
Any, anything else?
That's it.
Jim, can you, anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm not a resident, but. Good evening. John with J. Brian Day on that two forty Maple Street. And yes, I purchased the property in two thousand eleven. And, you know, I did it the right way, the proper way. I had an attorney. There's no secret, there's a lot still available right on Maple Street, right in front of our building. And that was a huge investment for myself, my family. My house is on the line. We put everything we 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 have into that. And, you know, I did not hear one thing about this until just recently. I'm sure all of you know about it. Ended up going to court. That's when I found out about it. I think it's kind of, you know, it's it's very unfair to a working guy and you're never going to see a hardworking guy than Paul and myself. We pay our taxes, we pay them on time. I think that it's just, it's, you know, I can't put a house there. No one's going to want to buy a house looking at J. Brian Day, although we keep it perfectly clean, neat, plowed. It's just not fair. So I really appreciate you guys considering that tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. My name is Michelle Carlo. I am at two six. Mom said, we have been over twenty. We per the property when it was light industrial. We have been there. I actively have a business that runs out of that location and it's very disturbing to me that the entire strip of land on our side, that probably seven or eight businesses are being recategorized when directly across the street, not only is there Amazon, but there's two pieces of property that are for sale right now that are slated like industrial to be built right now. It's wrong. It's not fair. We've been taxpayers in the Town of Bellingham. We don't work here. We pay a lot of money and you know what? We pay extra for stormwater, waste cleanup, extra hydrants, all of this stuff. And I think arbitrarily because Bellingham wants to justify maybe something to give back to the residents and I get it. I get it, you know, I I wouldn't want a big industrial building next to me, but if I bought a a house and it was near something that already had existing infrastructure, that would be something I would have to accept. But for right now, what is happening and the fact that this is going to a town meeting past this board when it was already shot down in in Land Court is just not fair. And I think that that's something that the the planning board really needs to think about. Because in the end, if it gets changed to suburban, our tax rate's not going to go down. What the level of services that we pay for, you know, aren't going to go up. And our property value, if we were to resell it or to bring in tenants, is going to be slated to what's the general purpose of it right now. So and you were already told that. So I think that's something to think about all the way around.
Thank you. Addressing issue one more. Service.
Again, Arthur Scalise to real six Maple Street. Speaking to the issue of taxes, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe our taxes are going to revert to a suburban rate, not industrial commercial.
I'll ask Jim that in a moment.
Okay, if it does, then you're going to lose huge amounts of tax dollars. There's no reason to lose it because the businesses are already there. I'm the only one that's not there, but should I be there? I'm still paying commercial industrial, even though I have a single house there. And I think the taxpayers are going to lose dollars that they didn't have to lose. And they could keep existing businesses as well as any other new businesses in areas of, you know, like my lot, that we can develop it and generate more tax dollars for the town. Just doesn't make any sense. If I go to suburban industrial or suburban residential, you're going to lose a lot of money and I just don't think it's fair to the taxpayers either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience?
I was told that our rate, our tax rate would not go down. We would pay the exact same amount, which is clearly not fair either.
Jim, can you address the issue about why we're here this evening with regard to the court action and the other questions that have been raised?
Sure, I can, I can tackle a few of those. Please stop me whenever you like. So kind of, I I wrote down a handful of these. So taxes, taxes based on use, what you're doing there at the site, you know, the assessment is what is the use on the property? A rezoning doesn't prohibit you from continuing that use. Understood that it would have, as one gentleman mentioned, some ramifications in terms of changing uses, changing tenants that have different uses, certainly. You know, an extension or an alteration of the existing uses there now would require a special permit, so it wouldn't be prohibited. It would just be a special permit. So it'd be a an additional hoop for landowners to to go through and and property owners to to do. That's completely understood. Again, the purpose here, you know, based on the the development that's taken over time. You know, Bellingham has evaluated, you know, our master plan for for town, for infrastructure. We've looked at all the different areas in town and we've been doing rezoning. The board has been doing rezoning, the town, the annual town meeting has been taking up rezoning pretty much every year for the last four or five years. And this is one of those items where the town and the board sought north of four ninety five again to rezone those areas. And there was discussions of of continuing it further south. Unfortunately, a petitioner moved ahead of us and did that first. You're right, land court decided against the petitioner. However, town meeting did vote unanimously in favor of it. And so not only of the true impacts that are on the ground, the true impacts that could be created by expansion of industrial at this area and the will of the vote was already made, the, you know, discussing with this board. It was decided to move this on, sit back onto the warrant for consideration. Tonight is again, the board's recommendation. Once it's on the warrant, this is, this is the selectman's warrant. So once it's on the warrant, the planning board, there's no ability for the planning board to take it off. It's, it's on there and they have, can either recommend it or not recommend it. And it would be written on the warrant, you know, planning board has recommended or a planning board has not recommended. It likely will go to FinCon, the Finance Committee as well. I don't believe it goes back to the select board and then ultimately it's, it's up to the town voters at town meeting. And forgive me if I missed any questions. I'm happy to touch on anything else.
Any other questions? I think we've answered the concerns of the people that were here this evening. Our action this evening simply says approve or not approve and moves forward to the town meeting. That's the principle of town meeting. It's, you know, it goes back centuries, you know, especially New England, that above the town meeting. And again, it's only recommended or not recommended by the planning board. Any questions from the board? I know a lot of things have been said. I understand the impact that it has on the people that are here this evening. And I certainly don't take that lightly, but right now, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, their, their grandfather, their, their current condition.
Right, so that, so a rezoning, I I think most of the property owners there are knowledgeable of the the process. Yes, it, the the use is allowed to continue. It's certainly not a, like a relocation of any business. You know, it's, it's, the underlying zoning would change as long as they don't abandon that use. They would allow, be allowed to continue on with that use in perpetuity. Again, there are some additional restrictions, certainly alteration or an extension of of a use that's not allowed by rights and underlying zoning, which would then be a, this would be a pre-existing non-conforming use, would then need a special permit. So it would be an additional. So it would be a, uh, an additional hurdle, additional permitting level. Uh, but those uses would allow to be continued to operate as, as they are.
And the purpose of this is to, um, reduce the opportunity of land in front of the access to Belling. For property that is not within the confines of Belling. The, the access would be simply through Bellingham. And then the property gets expanded and, and, uh, property that town is on or owned within the confines of the boards.
Well, certainly that's something to consider. You know, the, there's a lot of properties, uh, that would only access onto Maple Street. So that's certainly something to consider. That's part of the variables that, you know, this board has been looking at for some time, traffic impacts um, as well, as well as other impacts, but predominantly traffic impacts on Maple Street. And, um, you know, so yeah, so we're not just focusing solely on Bellingham properties, but obviously the town of Bellingham only has control of their properties and, and not of Franklin. So certainly something to consider.
Any comments from the board?
Uh, like you, I'm not insensitive to the people that are old property along Maple Street and how they'll be impacted. Like, I, I sympathize with where they find themselves now, but I do, um, recall many projects before us and many hours and many meetings and rooms full of other butters that have complained about the, the zoning that we have in that particular area of town and the proximity to residential and the proximity to the one forty, one twenty-six intersection. The, um, Maple Street intersects one twenty-six and one forty. We, we are the planning board have looked at this quarter intensely throughout those projects and have wrung our hands and said, only if this was a little bit different. And I think that, you know, we looked at this a couple of years ago and we decided to support it because it holistically, although it impacts these poor people, and I, and I, I do appreciate that holistically from the town. This zoning change, like Jim says, aligns our infrastructure needs to the zoning that is not currently aligned. So I, I, I do think that this, this particular stretch of property would, or of land would be better served as suburban. And, and recognizing that there are impacts to those individuals that own the property, but it, like Jim said, it is grandfathered to some extent. There's additional hurdles. So I, I, you know, I, I think that this is something that we should do for the town. Um, and, and to your point, Bill, that the, the, one of the considerations is that there's a significant amount of sort of landlocked industrial land in Franklin that can only be accessed through Bellingham. So Franklin will get the tax revenue of the industrial development. Bellingham will get the burden of the traffic and everything else that goes with it. So I, I do think that we need to be mindful and strategic. And this is all in keeping with, you know, the, in different boards, we look at a master plan and trying to align our infrastructure to look to the future and correct the problems of the past. So I, I, again, I'm mindful of all of the people that are impacted by this. But as a town, I do think it's the right thing to do. And the town has already approved this, but for a lawsuit, but for administrative mistake of stamping a notice. This, we wouldn't be talking about this.
Anyone else?
I just, two, two questions really quick. And this is, Jim, I think you can answer this. Um, so if these are changed to suburban, there is no way there, anyone could purchase one of these lots and get access to the Franklin properties if it's used by industrial use? Or is that allowed through special permit?
Uh, well, it would, it would depend. Um, it, it, I would have to look at the property itself. Um, the, the current uses, the current uses that it's cutting through. Um, so this, this is a tool, but it, it may not be the, the end all or anything like that. Uh, so it would just be, be dependent, honestly.
Okay. And then just one other quick question. If this is changed to the suburban district, the, as soon as the parcel changes to ownership, grandfather of that use is gone, correct?
No. So if, um, you have a pre-existing non-conforming use and you sell your property and it maintains that same use, there's no change. Um, you can continue on with that. Um, you can certainly sell it as your current use, but with no problems. Um, it's when you begin to alter or extend is where you'll have, um, you know, an additional permitting hurdle. And then the other, the other alternatively too, if you ever abandon your use or if you, um, you know, you wanted to change drastically to say, you know, e-commerce or something like that, where it was, it was not, uh, that would be, uh, something you wouldn't be able to do.
Thank you. That answered my questions.
And Jim, just to clarify, in case the question comes out, let's assume for state purposes, someone transfers title to their family members. It does not change.
No, no, the, the ownership, it's, it, zoning is all about use. Uh, so it's, it's, yeah, it wouldn't be concerning to the ownership.
Um, I would entertain a motion. For approval to recommend.
I would, I would say just, uh, and procedurally, if, uh, if you're exhausted the review, if you would like to close the public hearing.
I would, um, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, I have a question. I have a question. It was, you know.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Is it, like, one parcel of land we're worried about getting into Franklin? I, I, I'm still, I mean, it's all wetlands. You're not getting into this is one certain piece of land that you guys are worried about them getting into to build an industrial park? Is this what I'm hearing? Somehow they're gonna try to get in and build this, uh, Amazon in Franklin next. I, I don't quite get it.
You know, um.
What, 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 Jim, what's the issue with your, uh, zone here? What piece of property are they trying to get into Franklin and build this?
Sorry, I'm not trying, I'm not trying, I'm trying.
I'm sorry, we're trying to prevent it. No, I understand that, but is it just one parcel? No, it's, it's a lot of pieces.
There, there are, there are a few, sir. Uh, uh, that, yeah, but that's, again, that's just one aspect of, of this total discussion here.
We're trying to control, you know, the, the.
No, I understand that.
The growth in the town.
Let's see, this is very small pieces of commercial buildings that they have so long as, you know, with those homes were, you know, this is the part that I understand.
My model. But, but for a technicality, you notice this was approved by the townspeople at a town meeting two years ago.
No, I've heard that.
I, I can't, we, we cannot ignore that fact.
But you guys weren't on the board then, correct?
Some of us were, some of us were.
Oh, okay. So even though, so you brought it to the, you're gonna bring it to the town again, is that what you're gonna try to do? Are you gonna take a vote on it tonight?
No, we, we, no matter what happens this evening, it moves forward to the town.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
The, the, the decision does not end in this, one way or the other.
Okay.
So, Brian?
I'll move to make a favorable recommendation.
I'm sorry, just real quick, uh, just procedurally, I don't think we finished closing the hearing.
I'm sorry, we need a, uh, we have a motion on the floor. We got in before the deadline for closing the public hearing. Sorry, I need to technically close the public hearing. We had a motion on the floor. It's been seconded in the close of public hearing. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion passes unanimously.
I'll move to make a, uh, to recommend the warrant article to town.
Do I have a second? That's like, we have a motion on the floor that has been seconded to move this forward with a favorable decision on the planning board. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. To those people that are here, I indicated that this moves forward to the town meeting. And the, the town meeting members will decide. No matter, no matter what the decision was to see, it still, it still moves forward.
So it goes to the town meeting and then does it go to a public vote? Is that what?
At the town meeting, it will be a public vote. Now, I encourage you, all of you that are here this evening, to, uh, to participate in the town.
When is that?
Jim, you have the date. I don't have it in front of me.
November seventeenth.
November seventeenth at the high school. I'd like to take a five minute recess.
Wait, you did. No, I have the rental.
Well, now.
It's available, no fumbles now. Lots to live up to.
Sure.
That's a self-invited.
Come on, smile.
Yeah.
That's.
I could turn on the call app.
Although, um, Jen and Matt, their tree, I guess, broke again.
Same tree.
Ours broke because they all planted them like right in a row. Ours broke a few years ago, broken half and fell into the streets.
Those trees are all the same kind of trees.
Yes.
So the trees originally, the trees that.
Yeah.
Five or six of them.
Yeah, across the street from us. It grew up like this and then the middle came now and I'm like, take it down. We were smelling. They smell like flowers.
Wow. They lost, I mean, literally five of the stuff that was down this year.
Yeah, they were all like the standard between the front yard and the fence. Yeah.
Maybe they, as far as mine, because mine, mine, part of the street was later.
Yeah.
Different contractors.
My husband, Jen, he's like, why don't you come back?
Well, I want to buy that too. That was the second. All right.
No. They got rid of materials. There's no more social distance. You know, it was made of lunch and then I don't think this is a big table. We can get it back for next time.
Well, I'm not complaining. We just noticed change.
Closeness is good. It's all good. Your system's good. It's all good. I'm almost ready for boost.
Feel the love.
Feel the love.
Who's playing tonight? I, I don't know. I guess maybe someone. Uh, Arizona and, uh, good night. I'd like to bring the meeting back to order. I'd like to open a public hearing on the, uh, water resource district. Um, Phil, if you could please read the warrant.
Pursuant to the town of Bellingham zoning bylaws, the procedural rules of the town of Bellingham Planning Board and MGL chapter forty-eight, five, the Bellingham zoning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October twenty-eighth at seven P M. American, um, and McCants Hall, Bellingham, Massachusetts. There's also a Zoom link provided. The proposal of the public hearing is to provide interested parties the opportunity to comment on the proposed town warrant article initiated by the planning board to amend the town of Bellingham zoning bylaws water resource district overlay map of the zoning map. The proposal recommends, recommends amendment to the town of Bellingham zoning bylaw section two forty dash one thirty-five to amend the water resource district overlay map of the town of Bellingham to conform to and match the DPT wellhead protection zone to twenty twenty-five zero 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 dash two forty-two-one. Do that again, protect, protection zoning to two zero two five zero 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 dash twelve G. Current version of the proposed amendment to the town of Bellingham's own bylaw and water resource district overlay map of the town of the zone map, including proposal revised map entitled Town of Bellingham Water Resource District through April twenty twenty-one may be viewed at the planning and zoning office for the town clerks, both in municipal center and mechanic street, Bellingham, Mass. during regular municipal business hours. For questions, please contact the town planner at five eight six seven six five seven two eight nine two. Amendments are also available for review.
Motion to open a public hearing. I have a second. Great job, by the way.
Second.
All in favor, open the public hearing. Please signify by saying aye. Anyone here this evening, uh, in regards to this warrant? Jim, can you, uh, bring us up the screen?
Yeah, yeah, this one is more of a, uh, administrative item. Um, this is D, so DEP, the state, um, updates their water resource districts from time to time. Um, and we, uh, as a town like to stay in compliance with that. Uh, so let me just share the screen real quick. We actually have this here. So this is our water resource district map. Uh, that just, you know, cuts straight through town. Um, and we're pretty familiar with it. And, uh, actually on our GIS map, it's actually already been updated for us. So this little connection here is DEP's addition. Uh, so it used to be cut, uh, not connected. And now they've added this, uh, just updating their mapping again, just further protects the water resource district. Uh, and so the, the request is for recommendation, uh, to support the update of the map to reflect DEP's map.
Thank you. Anyone here from the public? I'd like to make a motion to, uh, close a public hearing. That's the most, excuse me, that's the motion to close the public hearing. So we'll, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing on this water resource district expansion. Um, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, um, that motion passes unanimously. And we'll move forward to the town meeting.
I'll move to make a recommendation.
Oh, excuse me.
Make our, we'll recommend the warrant article.
Got that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Second.
Been a long night.
Yeah, we're good. We got it.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's, thank you very much. I apologize. It's been a long night. Um, Julie, I have the, uh, Bellingham, um, short-term rental leasing. Um, Liz, if you could, um, read the, um, warrant, please.
Um, the town of Bellingham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. In the Arsenal Meeting Room, ten Mechanic Street, Bellingham, Mass. O two O one nine. There is a Zoom link provided. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on a proposed town meeting warrant article zoning bylaw relative to short-term leasing, to see if the town will vote to add a zoning bylaw, providing that no property is owned. providing that no property, zone residential, suburban, or agricultural shall be short-term leased or rented for a period of less than thirty days unless specifically authorized by the Zoning Board of Appeals through special use or variance with associated due process, applicable board reviews, and permitting notwithstanding any grandfathering clauses. In compport with Mass. general law, any short-term lease or, or may be required to register with the Massachusetts Department of Revenue and to comply with the reporting and collection of all state and local taxes relative to short-term lodging.
Thank you very much. I would like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing. I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion to afford open the public hearing this morning. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed. That motion, that motion passes unanimously. Is Larry here? So the floor is yours.
Lawrence Fazaro, three thirty-seven Lake Shore Drive, and I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of background and state right up front that there's been some misconception and disinformation.
Larry, can you speak up? Sure, I've been hearing.
That's okay. I'll try to address it. So I'm, I'm gonna try and give you a background as best I can, and I know it's very late, I'm gonna do it as brief as possible. And I just wanted to clear up some disinformation that I have heard, that this is a prohibition to any short-term leasing in town. And that's not, definitely not the intent of this article. The intent is to keep it, in keeping with current protocol for any special use in an area that it's not zoned for that use. And in particular, this is a suburban neighborhood. And if, I'll give an example, if I wanted to have an in-law set up in, in my home and have one person stay there and with a separate little area, I would have to come to the zoning board and get a special permit, special use permit, to be able to do that legally. Right now, there's no law in Bellingham, no bylaw in Bellingham that governs any of that. So for one person, I would have to do all of that. However, it seems that with transient people coming in and out, they would stay for a day, month, week. There's nothing to limit that, and that could be very detrimental to our neighborhood. And again, I, I think it's, it's not in keeping with the way that we operate in, in all other ways. For instance, in-home businesses, things have to be done in terms of various permits being attained in order to even get a business certificate. We have people go to every department to make sure that there's some special permit to be done, to make sure that taxes are not owed. There are so many different things that occur where a permit is required, and with short-term leasing, it's not. You can go down to even, this is a personal thing, I'm having a window replaced, and I had to get a permit. And I had to make sure my taxes were up to date, and so on and so forth. But there's, there's nothing at all in place for, I mean, if there's short-term leasing. And even, and, and actually, it is a business of sorts, and if it's large enough, it definitely is a business. And there are no things done, like what capacities are, what parking spaces are needed, and so on and so forth. In the areas that might be most prone to this kind of thing, and I'm speaking, I was because I live in the Lake Hiawatha area, so we'll talk about that. The roads are very narrow. There's not ample parking for the residents that live there. And if you start having two or three or four more cars, it makes it extremely difficult to even navigate through. So again, it's not that I'm saying, or this, this article is saying that we want to just allow short-term leasing, but just that they go through the same process that everyone else does when there's a special use. And I, in my estimation, in a suburban neighborhood, that's residence zone, one family, this would be a special use to have these people, this transient people going in and out all the time. And just really quickly, the impetus for this, the reason that I'm doing it as a citizen's petition is because we have a situation in our area, right in the Lake Hiawatha area, and as you probably all know, the majority of the lake is in Town of Bellingham. The shoreline on the other side is actually in the town of Blackstone. So as the old saying goes, I can see Blackstone from my backyard. And there, this year, what happened was a woman who has actually been operating for a couple of years under the radar has decided to expand her Airbnb and VRBO capacities and was renting out and advertising for up to fourteen to sixteen people. The town of Blackstone had no bylaw, because then we're telling him has no bylaw. So they could not immediately just shut her down. And now they're kind of chasing their tails around to come up with a bylaw and to get it in place, and they are trying to do it without any grandfather. I think that, that's, you know, when we have the opportunity to do this before there is an actual issue, I think is really, really prudent on our part, and to be able to curve for change instead of trying to catch up. The situation, again, as you say, okay, well, that's in Blackstone, and I've heard that several times. But the same person actually came before the zoning board about a week or two ago having a grandiose proposal for reusing the old charitable property. That was, she was with her without prejudice, so she could be back. Hopefully, she won't be. But in, in this case, the person that's doing all the remodeling were illegally, by the way, in Blackstone and doing all the stonework and stuff around her house, actually just purchased a home right next to our, the kind of off the beach. And it is a three-family home. I mentioned that it was a one-family residential area, but that's a three-family home because of predated zoning and its grandfathering. And at the time that the zoning was put into place, that house was occupied by a multi-generational family, three different generations. That went away a long time ago, but it's still being used as a three-family, so it's still being grandfathered. There's nothing to stop him right now from turning back into an Airbnb and having rental apartments plus an Airbnb. And we're seeing the havoc that's been caused with the disrespect of people's properties with the situation in Blackstone, and I really don't want to see that come to our side of the bridge. But that's pretty much, you know, in a nutshell, that was what, what urged me to move on early on and get it done before there's any real problem to deal with. And people give them, sure have things that they'd like to say, so I will. I think that goes to you. And along with the.
Thank you. Anyone in the public here this evening? Want to speak on this, on this issue? Yes, sir.
My name is Donald, he's there, we will be twenty-four, we should drive. One side of Larry, just to reiterate what Larry was saying, yeah, I know that Airbnb a couple of years ago was on their stream, screwed me up. They were doing short-term rentals and, uh, good stories about, you know, throughout the country, drug dealers coming and bouncing around and, you know, rent houses here and there, so they wouldn't be trapped. We just don't think we need that enough in our community. And like you were saying, you know, you, you get people coming in renting, they're not familiar with the area, there are no sidewalks there, there's a tight road getting around, so I think it's bywater place, protect our community.
Anyone else? Anyone in the board?
Mr. Chairman, I also may say that this is not just local people who live in Hiawatha area. I have the petition right here, there's sixty-one signatures on here, and every area of Bellingham is represented here. And the thought process is that even if it may not be an Airbnb type of thing, you know, that places in the community, the concern is that rooming houses are not regulated either. It's the same type of thing. So the people are concerned that rental properties can just pop up.
So you, you want to put a process in place to control this?
And, and further, there are communities that have actually prohibited short-term under thirty days. And just for your own knowledge, here, the Town of Litfield actually had a prohibition, and someone challenged it. And the Supreme Judicial Court in Massachusetts upheld the law and said that communities have the right to do that. This is not a prohibition. This is just putting it in the same kind of category as any special use.
To be very transparent, I own a property seasonal rental. I, I've heard Airbnb mentioned a few times. I, it's been rented probably for the past fifteen years. We use Airbnb as a platform. Right? This will not influence my vote one way or the other. I just want to be clarified that my family does own such a property for seasonal rentals.
In Bellingham?
No, it's outside the town of Bellingham. Any other comments? And discussion or emotion?
So if you have one discussion, absolutely. Larry, where it says for period less than thirty days unless specifically authorized by the zoning board of deals through special use or variance, are you? I'm confused by the word use and or variance. Is it, are you intending? So thirty days unless specifically authorized by the zoning board of appeals through special permit?
Yeah, and Mass. general law uses anything less than thirty days as short-term rent.
And, and Jim? You still muted? Please, Jim.
I didn't hear a question.
The what is the petitioner's ability to amend the warrant article? If the wrong terms is, I assume that the wrong terms, I don't know if you can speak to that.
Well, so that, I don't know, Larry would, would know pretty well, as the town clerk, you have to stay within the four corners of the, of the article, so you have to stay within the, the spirit and intent of, of what you're proposing. It, it, as a petition article, however, it's, it's up to the petitioner to make any changes. So that's kind of a trickier situation. We could certainly work with Larry, though, on, on any, anything that needs to get changed, maybe, and ultimately, I, I, you know, we'd have to work with town council on, on how we could process that. If it's anything that would change the real spirit of what's being proposed, I think it would have to wait to a later date, though.
Jim, may I interest Jim for a moment? So Jim, what, could it be amended on the floor?
So, yeah, again, it could be, as long as it's within the spirit of, of the, what's being proposed, you know, you're not changing, completely changing it up. And as, as the petitioner, obviously, you would have to agree to that.
Well, it's to insert the board of permits.
Right, so I, I think where Brian's getting at is, so I don't think it could be either or. So I, I think that's the, maybe the concern that council may have, a special permit for short-term, you know, we could add to the use chart, perhaps, if it was requested. So I don't know if that, again, I don't know if that would rise to the level of being too much of a, too drastic of a change. We'd have to talk to council about that.
Jim, to include, then, if it was a special permit, then the change would have to be made consistency say, to the use tables? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, likely, um, yeah, for consistency. It doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be on the use chart, but it just, that's, that's historically how Bellingham has structured these. But, you know, it, it certainly doesn't have to be.
I just, again, they haven't already reviewed it, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a variance is a very specific thing, and a very difficult thing to get from the zoning board.
Well, and, and Brian, so you wouldn't spell out, and you wouldn't spell out a variance in the, in the bylaw, you know, it's, it would be a prohibited use, and then they would seek a variance. You know, so because a variance varies from what's allowed, a special permit is a very prescribed. Basically, you know, I think what maybe Larry's intent here is for a very prescribed, this is authorized through special permit for the zoning board. So it'd have to be very specific. So that's likely what would transpire there and not a variance.
The variance has to flow from the topography of the soil. And so I don't, I just don't think that those criteria would match.
So in other words, if someone came to you and said that they wanted to have a short-term lease, and they didn't have the proper frontage or the proper parking or whatever, just hypothetically, wouldn't that be a variance if you were to grant the use that they?
Yeah, so, so, so if, if you ban short-term rentals, so I, I know you, you started out saying that's not the case, but if you ban short-term rentals, so it'd be a prohibited use, then someone would come to the zoning board and request a variance to allow for that use because it's prohibited. Right now, it's silent on the matter, and so there's nothing to say they can and can't do it. So basically, if you, if we were talking variance route, we would be hinting at the fact that we would be going down the road of prohibiting, we would be, it would be not allowing that use, and the only way someone could ever do it would be through a use variance from the zoning board of appeals. Short of that, if you want to do a permitting process, you could do it either through licensing, which would be, I think we had talked about at some point, a general bylaw, and very likely through, like, the Board of Health, perhaps, or a special permit through the zoning board.
Answer question?
Yes, sir. I'm Jim McLaughlin, three-three-seven Lake Shore. The other thing we have to think about is the safety issue.
Lake Shore is a really narrow road, and if there's no parking area for multiple people, you can't have them parking along the street. And emergency vehicles trying to get through. We've had that problem before with different, uh, things like the yacht-to-yacht sales that used to happen. There, there was a very narrow, I think, if the emergency truck or fire department tried to get through, you couldn't do that. And with the, with most of towns, with most of lakes, property, there's only like a small, maybe one or two car driveway. Real people don't park. You have to think about that as well, so.
Anyone else have any comments? Sir?
I'm Michael Connor, thirteen Bellstone Drive, or a question and a comment. The question is, would it apply to the campground in town? Because those are short-term rentals. And second, the board of selection on an annual basis adjusts the population of the Town of Bellingham by five hundred residents for the purpose of our liquor licenses under the premise of short-term rentals coming in in the population, they can adjust. It would be interesting to know who's legal licenses as a result of it.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, that, that adjustment is made for seasonal, not short-term.
That's suggested during the season of the summer.
So that would be anywhere in town.
Do you tell me this distinction again between seasonal and short-term?
Well, seasonal could be from April till June or equal to September, whatever. I don't, I don't know what the time limits are.
Generally, from. Generally, from April to September, we adjust the population of Bellinham by five hundred residents to justify the liquor licenses that we have in town.
So that's then a longer short term, if that's the case.
And then the other question was campgrounds. You don't address that or you have a different agenda here?
Well, I think there's regulations right now at the campgrounds that are not necessarily being followed. I don't think that they're supposed to be, to be there in the winter from what, from what I understand. I have to go back and look at the deed and so on. So I think that's a sort of a separate issue. And that's not that they are carrying their home on their backs, so to speak. I mean, it's not someone's home that's being used as a short term rental. It's a campground. And I think that, you know, we we have to look into see what's exactly governing that. But it's not a short term rental of someone's home in a neighborhood.
Jim, do, does campgrounds have a special zoning consideration or any use table anywhere, or how does that look, you know?
Yeah, without having it in front of me, I believe trailers are a specific requirement. And I believe it's under thirty days through the building commissioner. However, this certain campground, it does have some preexisting status. I don't know off the top of my head, and I'm not sure if Tim's, I know Tim Icardi has dealt with him.
Yeah, so that's a preexisting, it is allowed in certain, in a couple of zones. I'm not sure, I don't have the book in front of me, but campgrounds are not prohibited. That one that we have is preexisting. Not sure if it's by right in that zone, but the other regulation is a camper is allowed by special permit by the ZBA for thirty days only. If I find people living in a camper, then, you know, I would notice them and they would make application to the ZBA. But ZBA only has the ability to offer thirty days.
And obviously, you can offer less. Correct?
Excuse me?
They can do less than thirty, thirty days as well.
They can't live in it at all. It's not allowed to be lived in unless they go to the ZBA. And the ZBA is can afford, would allow them up to thirty days, that's it.
That's what I'm saying, so can they opt you thirty days?
No.
I thought you said it can exceed thirty days.
The zoning, the zoning board has the ability to let them stay in a camper for thirty days only in a calendar, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other points?
I just know one thing. I'm just thinking about this and where it says the applicable board reviews and permitting, I'm just thinking out loud as far as some of the issues that might come up with that. So for example, if you're going in front of zoning board for a special permit, let's say somebody wants to put in, you said twelve to fourteen people was what the person Blackstone was using.
She was advertising, that's what she was getting.
Okay. Six, okay, well, I'm just thinking, like, one, one issue might be like Board of Health, for example.
Because this, excuse me, this particular woman, her septic system is not even working.
Okay, well, I guess.
I I really want to keep it to to Bellinham. I understand what's happening in Blackstone.
That was only the history and the impetus for it.
I I understand.
I, and I asked the question, I brought, I was on brought up Blackstone, but anyway, I guess the only thing, and I'll make this quick. You know, Board of Health, for example, let's say it's a four bedroom house and somebody is saying, I'm going to rent out for sixteen people. If they have four bunk beds in one, in each bedroom, that's technically allowed through Board of Health because Title V is based on the bedroom. So I think these might be a couple of issues that might come up, is all I'm saying. Same with parking. You're renting out for ten people and, you know, they're bringing in two cars and that meets zoning regs, then, you know, what, what exactly can the ZBA enact if they say, no, you can't? Don't want to rent this. But anyway, I'll leave it at that. I'll stop talking.
Hi, I'm Jeanne M. Pat. I live at seventy seven Indian Run Road, which is at the corner of
If you step up there, please, you're being blocked by the TV.
I live at the corner of Cranberry Meadow and Indian Run, which I could throw a rock at the beach. So it sounds like I'm far from the lake, but I'm right on top of it. That house that we're talking about, the free family, that is, I could throw a rock at that. Um, the people on the other side of the lake are absolute nuisance to me, I mean, way far away. If what he's saying is true, is that a person connected to her just bought the free family that I could throw a rock at? This is a problem that is staring us dead in the face. This neighborhood is headed down a very, very quick slope into just, I've been there for twelve years. It has gone downhill exponentially. It's it's not the same neighborhood. And if this is happening, I'm moving, I'm leaving Bellinham. Nobody's doing anything. I don't get, if not attention from the police department, I have a lunatic living up the street for, I don't know, the entire time that I was there. I had an engine, I have lights, I have sirens for the last twelve years. She finally passed away, God bless her. But now her family lives there. It hasn't improved. Nothing's getting done. This neighborhood is going to shit. And I'm getting like pushback. I feel like you guys just kind of aren't hearing what's going on.
No, we're hearing, remember.
Okay, so what, is there a plan? Like, what is the plan? Because if I have to write something up to get it banned completely, I'll go ahead and do that.
I'm not, I am not saying no to this by any means. I'm just bringing up, you know, I've gone in front of many boards for permitting just because of my job, and these are just some issues that we just need to make sure that we're in front of. But, no, I I think this is a step in the right direction.
We're trying to answer some questions.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'm not.
I'm, I'm very concerned about my property value.
I'm glad you spoke.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I don't, I apologize if, you know.
Well, my issue is zoning. I've got a house across the street that's falling in on itself and has been for years. And, okay, we're zoning on that issue. So something needs to be done and nothing happens. And I'm now hearing that maybe this isn't going in the right direction for us, like, where's the plan? Who can I email? How do I set this in motion?
So first, we can only have to watch the front of the statement. None of us have said, we're just asking questions about the process, that's all.
Okay.
And and one thing, too, that something to think about, this is a zoning bylaw change. There is no the people that, if there are people currently doing this, they are allowed to continue to do this. And this would only look prospectively as opposed to a general bylaw change, which would prohibit it regardless of whether they're doing it or not. So I don't know if that's.
Yeah, but that is a complete prohibition.
No, I don't think so.
Would you have, what's the vehicle then to?
I think what, sort of, to what Jim was saying, that you would, you could prohibit it subject to a special permit. Right? And then that would have retro, retroactive.
Who, who would be the special, would it be the special, would it be the ZBA?
The ZBA, the special permit, transit boards. Just, I, I, if if there's a concern about something happening now and you're hoping that this will, it, that won't help that.
I understand, but to our knowledge, it's not happening now. That's why I wanted to get it through quickly. That's why I wasn't waiting for the bylaw review. Because that's too late.
I I do think that it's appropriate that we have something in the books rather than being reactionary like you thought, or what you were thinking, or you said. And I also know that the two areas in Bellinham that did sort of attract Airbnb, I think, are the the lakes. And as you said, those roads are narrow, the sewer systems are here. I mean, we've had, we've had applicants divorce that have really, really insufficient sewer and septic system. So that, for sure, that, tho- those are all very very reasonable concerns, right? So I, I, I do agree with this in principle, just the making sure that it's the right language and maybe.
Well, as I said, we could amend it on the floor if if that's the case. I mean, I'll, I'll go back to it. To get some more legal counsel and amend it on the floor, maybe.
I think the way it's written regarding variances, it might actually apply because, I mean, zoning variances is, actually, it is just for zoning, correct, at your ZBA?
Correct.
You know, say, you might be like local Board of Health variances and such, but I don't know. The only reason why I was bringing that up is because you might need to, or we might need to update some local regulations, potentially, to fit the criteria.
Let me ask questions, Brian, for your expertise. How is this different from like an in-law apartment? So that's, that's a special permit. So it's a special permit. You can't do it without a special permit. And this would be a variance instead of a special permit? Is the way it's written? I think it, I think it was supposed to say special permit. Because a variance is, you're very rezoning for a very specific reason because of a hardship relating to the topography of the soil.
Much harder to achieve.
So it's, I I think it's just, I think it's supposed to be a special permit. If it did say special permit, would that be something that should be in front of the zoning? Is that the right mechanism? I think it's akin to, I mean, law part. Playing with the zoning board. It's either, there's only two boards to choose from. I don't, I think it's more appropriate.
The major difference is you, it's a much longer term, potentially. It's not, you know, if it's an in-law apartment or a family apartment, it's not for a day or a night or whatever. And it's probably just a couple of people.
So can I ask one more question? Sorry. Is this something that if this is the pass, I have a home, I want to rent it out, is it for each person that rents it, I get to get a special permit? So it's seasonal?
No, once they get the special permit, they're allowed to do it. Shouldn't have to be done. Okay. Unless they violate it somehow.
So every, every tenant you have, you are not required to get a special permit? You get a special permit once, and it moves forward with the property for under thirty years.
And I would hope that in that special permit, they, you know, they don't say, okay, you can have up to a hundred people, they do something that's sensible and that makes sense with the size of the house. So it's everything they do with everything else.
And also, you know, people also have lease restrictions as well on their own property.
One last thing, too, Brian, you might know. If the, if somebody gets a special permit for the short term lease and there's an alteration, change or something for the house, does that, is there a way to outline then the special permit requirements where they have to go back or? Does, is there anything?
What they do in addition?
Yeah, so basically, you're changing, you know, the capacity.
I would, I would think I would defer to Jim on that one, but usually, like, for in-law apartments, there's you have, you have the septic checked out and it's a number, you know, there's
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right on, right on target there. Typically, there's kind of a, if you're going to do a special permit, there's almost a checklist within the bylaw that would say, you know, you need to verify you got proper septic capacity, you got the proper driveway width for whatever guest number you're looking for, et cetera. So that that would be typical. Without that, it's, it's, you revert back to the standard special permits criteria, which is more along the, of a somewhat broader conditions of, you know, neighborhood character and and the like.
And we're off to address that, going back to the variants. The zoning board's run specific on trying to add a person request of variance on top of a variance.
Yeah, and I get that. No, I I get that. Just, yeah, all right. I'm not gonna overthink.
We have, we have a question over here.
Yeah, I'm Diane Yates. I live at Lake Shore Drive. And I've been there for fifty years. Okay, when I first moved there, it was only agriculture, if I believe. Then, then we were zoned residential.
Right.
Now I think it's going suburban or whatever. Okay, now, when I go on vacation, if I go to Bed Bath and Beyond, you know, B and B, I go for a day or two, a week, maybe. We don't need people, especially coming from Rhode Island, because they like the beachy area, to rent for a week and then move out. This is what we're afraid of on Lake Shore Drive, especially maybe in the near fifty years, like a very good chance to invite people. In the near fifty years, I've seen a lot of changes.
Thank you.
I know. Anyone else? Oh, five years ago, my name's Mike Polley. I live at thirty Lake Shore.
Yes, sir.
Probably, if we have people visiting over at that house, I know for a fact, almost hundred percent, that it's cesspool over there, not a septic at that house. And we had someone drown in the lake about five years ago. I actually jumped in the water trying to find him, which I couldn't. And that wasn't the first one. There was one a few years prior to that, so. And that's people that are coming from out of state. They're out there potty and drinking in the water, don't know how to swim. It just, it brings a bad vibe to them. They're like, I've been there forty-five years. And it was a great neighborhood. I, it's just something we don't need in that neighborhood. I mean, the lady that's doing it, she flies up and down that road.
I I don't, I don't want to make this personal.
You know, I I just, I I don't like what she does.
I understand.
I don't like her plans. You know, like he said about the shovel, she wanted to turn it into a nightclub. We don't need that down there.
I believe the impetus was a lot of some people against it.
Right, good question. So if this is a special permit instead of use or variance, you would be, you would feel better about the language?
I think so. I I think it, like what Jim said, where you you have a specific factor to consider, I think that would make it more robust. It times it up. Who times it up?
Okay.
But I, you know, I believe in, I I agree with the intent.
Sure, yeah. No, I think it's good to be proactive on some of these issues, then, as Larry has said, kind of chasing the tail. Okay.
Any other comments? From the public? And you, I believe we should close the public hearing. I like the motion, close the public hearing, then, second. Motion on the floor of closed public hearing is being made, and second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Looking to all of you for directions. We're going to recommend a wording change.
So Jim, I, we don't we don't, how does that work?
It's not our petition, so I don't know.
No, you can't.
Yeah, we can't recommend a word.
Yeah, no, no, this petitioner only can draft and put on to the to the warrant. So, yeah, you're just recommending or not recommending tonight.
Strict, on the strict text of what's presented.
Exact, exactly right. I mean, if if something to change on the the floor, you know, we can certainly post an agenda so that you guys can discuss it. If something's present on the floor, you can take a five minute recess, discuss and make a recommendation at that point, too.
At at town meeting?
Uh yeah, at town meeting.
We would have to post it.
Yeah, we we uh yeah, we typically post um the town meeting anyways, just because there's all of you guys there is just to cover us. So uh you can say, you know, any actions that need to be taken during town meeting, and I can work with Amy on the language there. If you uh you know, if you could even pass over your recommendation tonight and say, you know, at uh you know, when asked, um you could simply say, you know, um something to the effect of we weren't comfortable with the language, but it's understanding that the petitioner might be amending it and, you know, you can take up your your recommendations at that point.
Larry, what is your how do you feel about changing the language?
I mean, I can go back and as I said, I can rework it. And I don't know if I can make the amendment on the floor. I guess I can.
Cause you're the petition.
Yeah, so I guess I could do it right then and there.
Correct, Jim?
Um you know, honestly, uh I think you might have Larry, you I mean, I don't know how it would work. Typically, don't you ask the the moderator uh for uh approval to make? So I I think the moderator may have to approve your modification and council has to okay, that's within the four corners.
Check with town council on it.
Yeah, yeah, just check with town council to make sure.
I I think we're working towards something would tighten this up.
Yeah.
And also be proactive.
Yeah, we can't. I don't think we can recommend it with variance.
Okay.
But Larry's requires a change. I understand the time-sensitive part of it all. Would you consider putting it to spring or is that too late?
So
I mean, before if he gets a change, can we meet again before town meeting?
He would change it on its floor.
Oh, okay.
Hold on, I don't want to dismiss that. If he was to amend prior to the town meeting. Could we then approve with that one? And a single item?
I suppose that is conceptually possible. Why? There's enough practically how that works, but we're gonna stop and during town meeting?
No, we couldn't meet prior to the town meeting.
He's gonna amend it on the floor.
No, no, he 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 could amend it prior. Jimmy, is that is that allowed?
So the I mean, it's already
I don't know.
Yeah, it's it's in the warrant as as drafted, so I mean, yeah.
Yeah, hey, hey, we could. So um I think we have a concern with the language. I think um I feel comfortable with the special permit language putting in place after town meeting. Do others share my concern, my thoughts? With some criteria?
That's a whole different. That would that would be different. So earlier when you were talking about the criteria, that would be a different. It's a special permit. Right, what Jim said, it would be more of a generalized special permit characteristic of the neighborhood and all that stuff. Parking, stuff like
Well, that's not solidified, but it's
stretchy. Potential invade to whatever that like.
You don't have to recommend it, just so.
Jim, one last question. I know you're not the town moderator. Is there something other than you don't recommend recommend? Is there a
Really special?
Yeah, you can take you can take no action.
I don't know, Larry, I don't want to sink it for you, so I
As I said, I mean, um it would be nice to have a recommendation, but it's really the vote of the people that's gonna count, so.
But I I believe if I'm listening to the board, if listening to the audience, we could vote to take no action as well. At the meeting, we could have a it's been noted, we could have a five-minute adjournment to make a motion to approve the language. That it would be it would be sent to the people at town meeting is approved by the Is that correct, Jim?
Yeah, potentially potentially that may work. Yeah, so a motion to uh take no action this evening and then just post an agenda for town meeting. And if, you know, it's more if uh the language gets amended, that's something that you would feel comfortable recommending, you can make that recommendation then.
That work?
I know it may disappoint the people here. And Larry, but I I think that gives us a little more tightening up of it. I'm just one person.
You're only looking for the same spec. In a in a perfect world, it would it would spell out the criteria of the boy and all that, but it we don't have a we don't have a big population for these kinds of uh activities, so would this be sufficient for what we need for? Probably, I would think.
So what are the potential implications that we if it's not changed, if it's as is?
It's a variance.
So it just makes it difficult?
It's conflicted. I I mean, it
Yeah.
It's
Can I can I just give an example with um the charitable? They were looking for they were looking to reestablish. They were looking for a special permit and they were looking for variances. So potentially, you could have a situation where it's a it's a special permit and also a variance because, as I said, if they if they needed to make an adjustment somewhere, then they could go ahead and have the area. They created more parking.
Yeah, I I it's just it's written that way. It's no property shall be used, blah, blah, blah. Other than through a variance. Right, so that's Well, I think it's special use. I I don't know if it's supposed to be use variance or use or variance.
No, it's just all variance.
Or special yeah, permit or special permit. It's it's just not it's missing a word.
Yeah, I I can understand what you're saying, that that is a special use permit, I guess.
Yeah.
I want to tell you how many people reviewed this stuff.
I could be completely wrong. I mean, I could be. It just it just on that, no. No, it doesn't make sense. It just doesn't.
I think the intent is there.
I think it's a special use permit is what it's supposed to be.
But it is it's a special permit. It's not a special use permit, so that's
Well, it would be a use because they use it as a use.
The problem is is there's a use variance, but there's not a special use permit. So it's a special permit or a variance or a use variant.
It it
They all have different legal meanings.
Yeah, well, that's the legal side of it, and I understand that, but in the vernacular, people to call them a special use permit.
Let me throw out a hypothetical. Let's assume we have someone on one of the lakes, Ellingham resident who wants to rent it out for um their unit for a weekend for people to have a wedding where, let's say, ten people are in a unit that can accommodate ten people. Right now, that would be prohibited on this. How would they where would they go for a remedy to do that on their property?
They they want to rent out the place for
A weekend or a week or a wedding. Of, you know, ten people who are renting that that rental property. I've got the answer. See the town clerk, he'll make the decision. So you may be the smallest person that ever that would prohibit the wedding, correct?
This is totally separate. So
Best point made all evening, sir.
Thank you.
But I think in that situation, it would require a special permit, because then they would also need a liquor license and everything else.
Yeah.
That they permit with
As far as they're staying here, I mean, you could have people staying in the home. It's done.
I I I understand.
This is something that has a contract attached to it.
If he's comfortable with the way it is now.
And I mean, town council reviewed it, right?
They reviewed it.
Fine.
Great. Larry, you're comfortable with it as it written, as it's written, correct?
I know what my intent is.
Right.
So I'm comfortable with it, fine.
What is your what do you mean when you say your intent? To tie it up? What does that mean?
So the
I'm not sure, yes.
The language is somewhat vague because it uses terms interchangeably that don't make sense. So a special permit is a specific thing. A variance is a very specific thing. A use variance is even a different. This says special use or variance. So it doesn't make sense statutorily because they're all three things. As written
Would I can I just do for something? Yes, excuse me, I'm sorry. Jim? Okay, so you know how at the very end of the whole process, when the motions are made up and they don't necessarily reflect what the original warrant said? Okay.
Yeah.
What is that called? Cause I'll do that.
Yeah, that now you would have to talk with Dennis Frain about. That's a I think that's the the select board, given that it's their warrant, uh they can make those modifications and and technically propose them at they're technically being proposed on the floor, but uh they're modifying in in advance. Being a petition article, I'm not sure if you have the ability, but again, you could talk with Dennis about that.
Well, I'll talk to the town council about it. Do you understand what I'm talking about?
Okay, when you when they're reading something, it's different from what
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna check into that and I can just take that use out and put permanent. Okay. So
So you would change one language?
Take the word use out and put permit in.
And strike variant.
And strike variance?
Well, I'm not telling you what to do.
Well, see, I think that there could be the possibility that they might be requesting the variance as well, the same way the charitable people do.
That that doesn't make sense. I'm sorry. It doesn't make sense. You it it's not both.
Well, they're asking.
But that's a different situation.
Okay, well, that's why I did it, because I knew that that was a possibility.
It's it's never a special permit or a variance.
Okay.
Either.
Well, I'm sorry. So let me check into it. I will make that change and see if I can do it without you guys having to do anything. I can just do it by changing the wording for the motion. Cause it it happens all the time, so let me see.
It does. It does happen all the
Happens all the time, every town meeting. Believe me, it makes me crazy, but
No, now you're part of it.
Yeah, and you're stopping weddings from happening on the lakes. So what is the
I'm okay with not ending it.
Yeah, I do.
Eyes on it and just gonna work on some of the language. I think it's right.
And that would entertain a motion. I mean
I would favor. Yeah.
Do I have a second? You came to the board of these
Oh, my goodness.
Of this warrant?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Um Larry.
Hold on, excuse me. Hold on, I gotta step back.
Yes, we do have to pose it. We already closed it.
We're holding on to the law.
We've closed it, which is shouldn't really be having all this much
I understand.
Like at the top, yeah, we're good. You keep going. We're good.
I am not against it, but as drafted, I can't recommend it. But I will vote for it at town meeting.
Okay.
If it is amended, but it it just doesn't make sense as drafted. It just doesn't. But I don't want
So what we have, I hate to interrupt you, but we're tenting a motion. So we need to vote the motion before. All in favor of the motion on the floor to support this warrant? As written with with
Just to recommend the article.
Recommend the article. I don't want to get ahead of myself.
To recommend the article.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I oppose for the and no, it's just it just doesn't make sense.
How about abstaining?
Oh.
Okay, we got it. That's a tough one.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my goodness.
So what was what was the vote?
We have, oh goodness, Jim, four, yes.
No, four to zero with one exception.
Thank you, Jim.
Is it? I didn't say
Yes, one exception, you're right. Oh, my goodness gracious.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your participation.
Release the covenant. We're almost there. We've got the covenant released, placed. Yeah. We can do that quick. Jim's got that covered.
What?
The covenant.
Yeah.
Bellham Shore's covenant.
Uh we need to make the motion, Jim. We need to make a motion this evening to release the covenant for Fafford and execute a new covenant for Eastland Development, who's now purchased the property. Council's review of this.
Yes, that's correct. Uh you should have the updated draft uh before you. Uh yes, we're releasing Fafford from its covenant. Uh that should be released secondarily uh from the execution of uh Eastland's um uh covenant. Uh I will I will note, council did highlight, though, that uh this is an extra precautionary step. Um really, the covenant goes to its successor. Um but this gets Eastland on the books as opposed to Fafford. Uh so I I thought it was the appropriate step to do, so if uh you can make a motion to execute.
Entertained a motion, excuse the cut, the covenant is presented to a receiving. So move. Second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay, and those are being passed around to sign? And then we have
Yeah.
Reset the minutes.
I know. Oh, okay, never mind.
I'll move to uh accept.
I think you have to do two separate motions.
All right, I'll move to approve the first set.
We have a motion to the first meeting that's been discussed this evening. Okay, second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Second. Motion on the floor to approve the second settlement. It's the last meeting we had. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Are you coming signatures to me?
All three.
We're setting two sets going back.
Yeah.
Credit for law. Okay, I think that covers everything unless Jim has something else.
So I missed. I only have three signatures. Can I entertain a motion to return?
Yes. Motion to return?
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Brian?
Thank you for
Thanks, Jim.